Of the Tiverton Town Council, February 25th, 2013. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mrs. Miller?
Counselor Gerlach?
Present.
Counselor Shavit?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Rodrick?
Present.
Counselor DiMederos?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier will be delayed. He's tied up with traffic and Counselor Aruder is not here. Can I just make one statement? We're having trouble picking up on the sound. It may not be the sound system, but we tend to not speak into the mics, so we're having trouble with the video as well. They see it real low, but it's because you're leaning back or you're not talking directly. And please use the mic as best you can loudly. Thank you.
Yes, I've been accused several times of not speaking loud enough. Okay, we'll begin with the Consent Agenda. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting, February 11th, 2013. Approval of executive session council minutes, February 11th, 2013. Approval of minutes of joint workshop, January 10th, 2013. Counselor Lambert abstains, not present. Approval of council workshop minutes, February 6th, 2013. Approval of council special meeting minutes, February 18th, 2013. Counselor Pelletier abstains, not present. Approval of executive session minutes, December 18th, 2012. Receipt of minutes from the following boards, commissions, wastewater management, prevention coalition, zoning board of review. Correspondence received and filed. Barbara Pelletier, response of Director Lewis to letter sent to RITOP regarding Secana River Bridge tolls. Correspondence received from Portsmouth Fire Department acknowledging Lieutenant Craig Comito, firefighter Frank Patrick White, firefighter Al Souza, firefighter Jay Andrade, firefighter Tom Mello, and firefighter Kevin Mancini assistance with the house fire on February 8th, 2013. Tiverton School Committee in town of Rehoboth, Mass. regarding opposition of tolls on the Secana River Bridge. Rhode Island taxpayers formerly RI statewide coalition requesting resolution supporting eliminating single-potting voting by means of a single mark in future elections. Resolutions opposing contract continuation from East Greenwich, Smithfield, and North Smithfield School Committees and Barrowville Town Council. Resolutions opposing binding arbitration for teachers and school employee contracts from East Greenwich, North Smithfield, and Smithfield School Committees. Resolutions supporting H-5066 and S-49 moving teacher layoff notices from March 1st to June 1st from Smithfield, North Smithfield, East Greenwich, and Tiverton School Committees. Barbara Pelletier, latest meals tax report. Notice of public hearing on Ledger Lane minor subdivision received from planning board. Tiverton Conservation Committee, a letter to Federal Aviation Administration regarding seaplane airport on Stafford Pond. And Tiverton School Committee resolution in support of H-5137 and S-0020 preventing RITOP from turning control of the Secana River Bridge to RI turnpike authority. Approval of tax assessor statements and Treasurer Denise Searle January budget revenue reports. Is there any deletions or things being held from the ... Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Motion carried. We have nothing under public forum, no public hearings. Advertised public hearings. Small cities community development block grant, first public hearing, community development block grant application, Christian Beldon Church Community Housing. Chris? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Beldon, can you just hold up a second? Okay. Mrs. Pelletier?
Good evening. In relevance to the letters that correspondents that I have submitted, I just wanted to enlarge on it. And I attended a meeting last Wednesday night on the bed and breakfast issue that is a golden opportunity for anyone who wants to start a small business who has extra bedrooms. There are very little rules involved in it as of now, and Mr. Tights and obviously building or whatever would have to solidify things like on-street parking and so forth and so on. But it was mentioned that this area actually, especially with Bristol having Roger Williams College, and Bristol itself hosts 300 weddings a year, which always need bedspades for bridesmaids, et cetera, et cetera, coming. And there's very little in this immediate area, so it would be a golden opportunity to make some extra money. And we should get that word out there and not make anything complicated for anyone. If they had a whole bunch of helpful hints, and if anyone wants to go into the details, they can contact me and I can talk to them about it. And again, as you see, the meal tax is, we receive about $85,000 a year, which is not chicken feed. It is a substantial amount, and if you factor it into per unit, house unit in town, it amounts to, I don't know, whoever does math very well can do that, at least $10 odd dollars a household. And as a matter of fact, somebody mentioned that the people in South Carolin-- in Charleston, North Carolina, South Carolina, wherever that might be, are extremely friendly to anyone coming into town. And somebody wondered why that was so, so they asked about it at town hall, and they said, "Well, look at this. With our tax bill, we send out a reminder that so much money is collected in our meal tax. Keep smiling, make them welcome, they'll spend less and your bill will be less." So we might try that. It'll take the edge out of the shock. The other thing that I wanted really was concerned about was an organizational flowchart on how this town works. I think few people know that, and you don't really know what the power structure is. And my very last thought is, we're getting the flyer out for the sending people to travel through Tiverton down to Little Compton and just get traffic going. And I do want to let you know that our economic development board rescinded their offer to help with the printing. They opted to give the money to, Mr. Schmidt opted to give the money to the Newport Chamber of Commerce, which is okay, because I guess felt that at that point, at this point, we don't have enough, but we have to start somewhere and do get people moving. So somehow or other, I will try to come up with the money, and, which was kind of a shock not to have it, because I had planned on it, but it'll happen, so whatever. And actually, the very, very last thing is, if you could, could you? Because I do see a lot of people walking dogs up near the town farm. Could you revisit the ban of dogs at the town farm? And since placing pause, my organization has funded five dog collecting stations and maintains them to the tune of $120 a month for the town. If we put one up there, fund it, do you think the message would be there? And we've been training the people now for two years or so about collecting, picking up, and doing it responsibly, that we could revisit letting people walk their dogs along there? Is that a possibility?
We'll put it on the agenda.
And would you seriously consider it?
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda.
Because I think it's a good thing for older people especially to be able to walk with their animals and so forth. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pelletier. Chief Robert Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. President. This Friday, I was notified by Rhode Island EMA that they have ordered a generator to the town of Tiverton to be used for town hall. It's a 14 KW generator. I have to make sure that I thank Bill Tavoris, who is one of the volunteers for Tiverton EMA, who did an awful lot of work to procure that. Public Works has agreed they will be going up on Wednesday to pick it up. And the problem is, we have to install it. So we have a gift of a new generator to run the town hall, but we have to figure out how to get it installed. So I just wanted to make that announcement to you. I didn't get a chance to sit and really talk to Mr. Gonzalo about it, but I felt it was important enough to get out there for you. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief.
If I could just add to that, in the use of mind, we've already got a spot picked out for it. It's on the south side of the building. We will pour a pad, and we know just how we're going to connect it, and the panel is right inside where it's going to be.
Great.
So if the power goes out, everybody in town hall can still work.
My name is Alex Cody, live in Wompernog Lane. I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a member of the budget committee. But I've been interested in the fire problem since I was 16 years old in this town. And talking to the chief, we were, they went down to inspect the new pump up, and the gentleman that owns the company offered us a towel ladder, a demo, for $729,000. Middletown just paid $1.4 for theirs. Portsmouth was over $1 million for theirs. They're all running anywhere between $1.1 and $1.5. He will sell it to the town, finance it if we'd like, deliver it here for $729,000 with the training. Now, I made mention at the forum that we had, people want to save money. This is the way you save it, because we know in a couple of years, we're going to end up buying one. The cities are getting busy, we're getting busy. You just can't call for a ladder car and get it right away like you used to. It's not happening anymore. But it's something that you people ought to really consider. That's a bargain. And that's fully equipped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Chris?
This is the community development block grant application, first public hearing. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Christian Beldon with Church Community Housing Corporation. I'd like to start off by thanking the town again for the opportunity to assist it with its CDBG application. This is the first of two required public hearings. The purpose of this hearing is to inform the residents of the town of the town's intention to apply for these funds. CDBG funds fund activities that predominantly benefit low and moderate income people, prevent or eliminate slums and blight, or can be used for certain urgent critical needs. And this year, so far, we've received several letters of intent to apply for these funds from various agencies in the community, one being the Housing Network for their community housing land trust program, another being Cornerstone Adult Services, who provides adult day healthcare, another being the Social Ventures Partners Rhode Island Group. They're proposing a micro enterprise loan program and a social enterprise study and initial implementation program in collaboration with Church Community Housing, who I work for. We are again applying for our housing operating funding to administer the regional revolving loan fund that provides lower no-interest home repair loans to residents of Newport County. We also do down payment assistance, foreclosure prevention, home buyer education, several other loan programs. The Housing Hotline has again requested or made clear its intention to apply for funding this year, as has the Women's Resource Center and the East Bay Community Action Program. In between this hearing and the second hearing, we'll continue to collect the communications that we receive from various agencies, and we'll be communicating with the town to develop the full list of activities that the town would like to apply for this year. So by all means, if you have any ideas of things that you think might be eligible for funding, please don't hesitate to contact us, and we'll certainly be interested to talk through your ideas with you. And other than that, I think that's everything I have to say. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Any questions? Before I go?
Mr. Beldon, can you just, for benefit of kind of new counselors such as myself, can you just give a quick overview of typically how this block grant program works? Like, who's getting the funds?
Sure.
Kind of like, bring it down to basics.
Certainly. This is the application from 2012 that was recently funded. The town received $173,000 the last year. $100,000 of that went to extension of sewer lines in the north Tiverton area. The Community Housing Land Trust received $2,000. Heritage Park received $25,000 to make improvements to its water system. Church Community received $30,000 for its housing operating expenses. The Community Housing Resource Board, the Housing Hotline, received $2,000 to support its services. And the Women's Resource Center received $4,000 to support its operations. The activities that are funded on any given year vary. It depends on who applies that year and what the state determines to be its highest priorities for funding, but that's a fair snapshot of the types of activities that get funded. In previous years, their housing development is actually a pretty high priority for the state, so if there's an affordable housing development that is at the point of being able to apply for these funds, those have in the past received funding through this program as well.
So, I'm sorry, the town of Tiverton received $173,000?
So 100, yes, that's right. This is an application that the town submits to the Office of Housing and Community Development. It is a town application. Church Community has, for many years now, been assisting the town in the preparation and submission of its application, as well as the administration of the program, just as an extension of our mission as an organization to create goodwill between us and the communities that we work in, and also just to try to help reduce the expense of administering a program in the communities that we work in.
And when is the deadline for submitting, 2013?
April 19.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not a public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, it is.
It is.
Sorry, Mr. Mike.
I just want to ask a question. Who makes the decision as to who gets that money and how's that decision come about? One of the things I just heard a couple of minutes ago is a fire truck. Now, that fire truck could service the north end. The north end is declared a depressed area, because you certainly supply the sewers for it. So that's where all, most of your toilet buildings are in town. Could that apply, number one? And another one that comes to my mind is the recreation area down on Bay Street. That's been let go for a good number of years because of the contamination, but that's now been taken care of. Could we apply for that? That's certainly low-income people down there in that area also. And again, who makes the decision who gets what?
The decision is made by a board that is appointed, I believe, by the governor. It's an extension of the Office of Housing and Community Development, which is a state agency. So it's a state decision. The award letters come from the governor. And in terms of those two different activities and their eligibility for funding, they would have to be, they would have to serve exclusively the residents of that area. It may be that the park being in that neighborhood, if, I'd have to see the exact location of the park, but if it was in that neighborhood, it might be something that you could apply for. But I know that in past years, because it isn't exclusive to the residents, because it's available to all of the residents in the town, that the state has typically not funded those activities.
Would this, would this committee take into consideration what this town council would then recommend? And they could recommend from 1 to 10, and I would think that that should hold a lot of weight.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once all the applications are in, we review them through GIM, and then, you know, we kind of say, "Okay, these are our priorities, and hopefully we get funded for them."
Right.
Yes.
Good evening, Susan Scan, Chief Operating Officer at East Bay Community Action Program. We own and operate the facility at 1048 Stafford Road here in Tiverton. But our request this year for support under community development block grant is for $5,000 to support the operations of our community health center. Our new community health center, we have completed the construction of it. It's located at 6 John Shapie Boulevard in Newport, right on the same campus as CCRI. State-of-the-art facility. We presently see just short of 100 Tiverton residents for family practice medicine at that health center. And we, the support that we would be asking for would be for our community health and dental programs. And we see 141 Tiverton residents for dental care. Our dental facility is at 19 Broadway, Newport. So we would ask your continued support. We thank you for your support, both through the municipal budget and community development block grant.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Manning, and I'm with Cornerstone Adult Services, a member of St. Elizabeth's community. Happy to tell you we've got a few good things going on over at the Little Compton Center. We took over operations approximately two years ago. We're averaging about seven people a day as a census. We're now hovering around 14, 15, so we've increased and created some stability. Our goal is to get to 25 on a daily basis. And this past year, we serviced and provided service to 27 Tiverton residents. So that's an increase. I think last year was like 15. So we're increasing our presence in the community, and people are getting to know what services we do provide to the elders in town. This past year, we've instigated, instigated, wrong word, started, implemented, thank you, a fall, enhanced falls prevention program at each one of our centers across the state. And in Little Compton, we were able to secure a grant for New Step, a clip, recumbent bike and exercise equipment for the participants there. This past year, we were recognized nationally by New Step with a gold pinnacle award for our falls prevention and restorative health program. We are seeing some elders come in in a wheelchair and oxygen and not able to do a whole lot for themselves, and within a few months of doing the exercises and getting involved, that wheelchair is gone, and maybe a walker's gone, and the oxygen is reduced, and their quality of life is improved greatly, and they're able to stay home a lot longer. And that's our goal, is to keep them with their families and independent as long as possible, and keeping the cost down. So we are resolutely submitting a grant for $5,000 to help those elders that are in the low-income bracket that need a little help in paying for the services. Any questions?
I'm sorry, where in Little Compton are you located?
East Main.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Nancy Brayton Osborne Center. Okay.
I just have a question. If someone were to contact you, how do your clients get there?
The ride program does provide transportation. Families bring. It is a little, it is an issue, and I know that there's been some study done from the Little Compton area about our transportation. It isn't a difficult thing for some of our participants outside of the area. Tiverton has a, meets the ride criteria, so that helps. But yes, we'd like to improve the transportation and get more people there. Okay?
Anything else?
Thank you very much for your support and continue sharing our story with others that you may find homebound that need to come on in and visit us.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now we'll close that public hearing. Non-advertised public hearing. DPW Director Stephen Blucci?
I mean, good afternoon and evening. It's been a long day plowing again, since 10:00 last night till 2:00 this morning. In any case, every year, the town is required to put in an annual report to DEM reporting about our stormwater system, which is all of our catch basins and drainage systems that empty into our rivers, our ponds, our streams. This annual report is, is something, like I say, we do every year. We just really update some numbers. But this particular one has taken on a new light with our notification from DEM about some pollution issues we have at Rabbit Gray, Summerfield Lane area. What we've done in the last two years is we've had two large meetings with DEM trying to keep us on course to solve their issues in the long term, what we're looking at. Right now, we're kind of in the, in the phase where we're trying to spend as little as money as possible. We've put together the pamphlet you're looking at in front of you that the DEM suggested we do some sort of issue like this. It's going to be passed out to all the areas in red, which you see, Summerfield Lane and Rabbit Gray. This is the area where the Mount Hope Bay and the discharges from two pipes, one from each area, severely affecting the quality of water in the bay. We didn't, the study was done through EPA funds and DEM, and really studied the water quality all the way up to Fall River, the discharges up there, that how, that's how it came about where the water testing was done, all the way down our shores. And in October 7th of 2010, the town received a notification from DEM notifying us of these two areas. And they also notified us in clear language, and I'm going to read it, and quote, "The town must, must, the town must commit to a schedule to commence the design and construction of sewers for these problem areas." We're being told by DEM, "We're going to construct sewers in these problem areas." At our last two meetings, we kind of let them know that we were doing a facility, sewer facility plan update. That's reasonably complete at this particular time. And just to review some numbers, they're preliminary. I'm sure that the wastewater commission will do it on this entirely. But if you just look at the map and that pink area that we have, to just to sewer the lower portion of Old Colony Terrace, which runs parallel to the bay, runs pretty much right on top of our main, our main 24-inch sewer line that empties into Fall River, the cost to service of 77 homes in that area with sewers is $1.1 million. That's an estimate. To continue all the way up to Main Street from that first project, 351 more homes, $6 million. When we add across the other side of Main, we call it Garden Heights area, we're talking about almost 500 homes more to be serviced at a cost of $10 million. When you add it all up, $17 million in sewer work that's hanging over our heads. We've talked about ways of disputing it. It's pretty hard to dispute sample results that are coming right out of our pipes. DEM has been terrific in working with us to kind of look at the problem, look at a long-term solution. Obviously, the first word out of our mouths have been money, funding. Where we think you're going to get funding for $17 million for sewers in the next, what, eight years? They're talking 2020. They kind of want this to kind of be done. But right now, they're looking for a plan. We're doing our best to come up with one. I anticipate we'll have another meeting with DEM once the facility management plan is accepted by the council, so we'll have a document to work off of. And the Sewer Commission obviously is working. is working on their side of the equation. And I'm sure you know about that, or you're going to hear about that. But what we're here tonight really is for, to hold a, a public hearing on our, submission of our annual permit to DEM. It's due March 10th. And any comments by the public or by the council that need to be addressed will be put in our report as a final document. So I guess we need a couple of things. We need a public hearing. We need, I guess, a vote on what you want to put in this document, and then we'll move it forward. So I don't have to come back to you for approval, I guess. I may have to.
You're still in the public hearing portion, so is anyone have anything to?
Does the council have anything?
I just had a couple of questions. And this is going to be difficult because there's no page numbers on here. But probably 10 pages in or so, there's, there's talking about the Stafford Pond watershed, the inspections that were happening in and around the Stafford Pond watershed area. This says that 225 inspections have been completed, which resulted in identifying 52 cesspools and 11 failed septic systems. So 52 plus 11 equals 63. It then goes on to say that to date, approximately 55 of the systems have been repaired. And I'm just wondering if we have a timeframe, estimated timeframe, if that, for when the balance of those?
Well, that's John Lynn Court to come down if I could.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is John Lynn Court, the Sewer Superintendent. I do not have a timeframe for those.
Is this something that the homeowners are on the hook for, or?
This is something that the homeowners are definitely on the hook for.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
John, while you're there, for this particular area in red, the Robert Gray and the Summerfield area, has inspections been done in those areas?
No, that is not an area, that is not an area that, that has required inspections yet. That is in that, that part of town that, that was, was the last area. Because we always planned on, on searing that area, we, we expected to start inspections there last. We wanted to handle those areas that, that we're going to rely on, on, on septic systems long-term. We wanted to get them onboard first. One of the, one of the things that, that the TMDL report and DEM is probably going to force us to do is take those areas. If we haven't started sewer construction by the time the, that area is, is up for the, the inspections, we'll have to start those inspections in, in those two areas first. That's one of the things they're pushing. Please?
When will that be?
Start July of 2014.
Inspections.
Inspections, yes.
And we don't expect good results from them inspections. If you know the area, it's all ledge, it's no topsoil, there's no stormwater drainage systems up there, and everything just comes out of the ground when the, when the water level rises. We know we have a problem.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I just had two more questions. Mr. Berlucci, again, deeper in the document, it's talking about the, the recommended canopy over the fuel station at the DPW garage. What, what were the estimates for that?
Ooh. That is really not high on a list. I don't even have an estimate for it because we don't plan on doing it in the immediate future.
Okay.
Rather pressing needs. But that was one thing DEM suggested we did do, and that we haven't. But I think we did several of the other things that they suggested. So the wash bay.
Yeah.
You know, the floor drains, I mean, really serious stuff. But we had, the canopy's going to be expensive.
Yeah.
You know, it's going to be hurricane-proof. You're talking $40,000 if you just asked me for a number.
Sure.
It's got to be designed by a structural engineer and built structurally sound so it doesn't blow away. I mean, and it's not going to be a cheap thing either, so.
Is that in the capital improvement plan?
I don't believe it is.
If not, you might want to add that to the list, so we don't lose track of it.
All right.
Thank you.
My only other question was, the next page after that is talking about describing activities and actions taken for controls to reduce floatables and other pollutant, excuse me, pollutants from the MS4. And then there's a line in here that I'm questioning. It says, "All town beaches and facilities have litter receptacles for public use that are regularly picked up and disposed of by the town." Now, the last time I checked down at Fogland, there, there weren't any?
That's at Fogland. We were having problems with the ones at Fogland, with people also bringing all their household trash. It's an unwatched area.
Sure.
So we have, we did have them, and we have eliminated them because, you know, pay-as-you-throw came in, and they became the town's receptacles instead of just our receptacles. So they've been removed from Fogland. That's true.
So I only note that, just to kind of keep things factual.
Okay.
I just have a brief question on the sewage. Barbara Pelletier, on this sewage thing, if we get, we know we have to do it. Is there such a thing as like a discount for having everything done, like going to the box store and buying a whole bunch of pipes and everything? There's a, there's a Wongum discount, getting it over with. And I do know from having worked on it at the house, that usually if you have it, have it done right away, it's cheaper than if you just kick it down the road, because prices go up all the time?
I think it's, the bigger the job is, the best, better price you usually get.
Would that be worth considering?
Yes, but come up with $17 million.
Well, we float ones for everything else. I mean, it's one of those things.
Usually you are right. The larger the job, the better.
But you know, if you can save like 20% and get it done, and, and it might, it might just be worth looking into at least. You get, maybe get a better price on a loan or something. I don't know. It's worth thinking about.
May I, may I respond to that question? We're, we're doing everything that we can to reduce the, the, the cost of the sewer construction. Steve's comment was correct. The larger the, the, the construction project, usually the better deal you, you do get. We're also looking, we're going to be pushing for USDA grants very hard. We're, we're also going to be utilizing the state revolving fund, loan fund, which will give us low-interest loans for, for subsidizing the projects. We can't do it all in one shot. That, that would absolutely tear up the entire town. What we're doing, what we're planning on doing is, is manageable sewer contracts, so that, so that we, we finish the project, the, the whole project in, in a reasonable time. And that reasonable time is, is really a 20-year time span to, to, to do the whole town, not just one or two years to, to do everything. We're, we're, we're going to spread it out. We're going to take care of those areas that, that need the, have the, the highest need for the sewers first, the Riverside area, the Riverside Drive area. We're going to, this area here, we've already told DEM that, that it looks like we're going to be doing it in, in stages, the lower end of the Robert Gray area, and then moving up the, up the street. So we're doing everything that we can to prioritize things and, and get the best, best bang for our buck.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. You know, well, obviously, you know, this is something that, that we have been looking at, and there is no answer, obviously, you know, to give quickly, especially when you're talking about $17 million. You know, obviously, we're going to be looking at that in the long term. And, you know, obviously, any grants and discounts and whatnot we can find, you know, obviously, we're just looking to the Sewer Commission to be right on top of that. All right. Anything else regarding a public hearing? Anything else from the council? All right, see, as far as you know, this is a complete document?
A complete document. I'll make the, the changes that Council Gurek mentioned about taking out the Fogland Beach receptacles. I think that's the only one I've heard so far that needs to be noted.
And I, I just have one question, and again, not being knowledgeable about these things. I, I know we've got, what, affluent pipes that go down into Mount Hope Bay?
Drains, stormwater drains that go, yes.
So, but they're catching overflows from sewers, and, I mean, from septics and so forth.
Well, yeah, they shouldn't be, but they are in this particular area because it's the high-water table and ledge and everything else involved. You know, there's failed systems.
Is, is there anything that can be done, again, I'm not knowledgeable in saying, but you know, to having like a catch-all or a cistern or something at the end to keep it from going to, like a holding, and then if it only goes overflows?
Yeah, I, well, if, if, when you take the time to read this pamphlet, we, this is, this is all about how, how, how to save water. And if you're saving water from going down your sinks, you're saving water that's, you know, trying to get into your septic systems. Talks about drain water coming off your roof and, and all of that sort of thing. But I don't think there's anything that, at the end of the line, if you have a failed system, you, you have a failed, failed system. And the only thing you can do is, you know, probably in that area is those raised sand filter systems. If we don't go to sewers, they're very expensive for each home, or you're talking $30,000, $25,000 each to put one in. So, I mean, that would be another possibility. But the long term, it's not, it's not the right solution, obviously. So it's a tough problem.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion, subject to the changes. Some moved?
Are we approving it subject to the changes?
The, the changes that Bill made regarding?
Is he going to have to come back for a second?
For an advertised hearing?
Yeah. No, this, it's not, it's a non-advertised hearing, yeah.
What did you ask?
I asked, is he going to have to come back for approval of the next draft anyway? What are we doing?
Did you speak up, please?
I apologize.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
What did you say?
I was asking the clerk if he would have to come back for a second time to, to put this back on the agenda for approval of the next draft. The answer was no.
No, as long as the changes that have been notated.
This will be, this will be a final. This is going to be, this will be going to DEM.
And the only change is Mr. Gurek's?
Yes, about the Fog, Fogland Beach barrels.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
Yeah, a second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Post. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, appointments and resignations. Tree Warden applicants. Is John D. Manchester here?
Yeah, I believe he's in Florida.
Good for him. It is Will Walker here.
He's in New Hampshire.
He's in New Hampshire. Okay, then, do we know when he'll be back?
We need to.
I don't know.
This is actually DEM requesting.
Yeah.
This, I mean, actually, you have to have by DEM, and we really needed it by the 27th. But these are the only two applicants. It was advertised as well.
Last year, I think it was the last time that this came up, John Manchester was in Florida. And he goes to Florida every winter for, I think it's two months. He was appointed while in Florida. He's been doing this for, it's only 25 years.
25 years, yeah.
He works closely with Steve Berlucci. I don't know if Steve Berlucci has any complaints. Hate to make him get up and walk again, but.
I would say the last five years in which I've worked with Mr. Manchester has been an excellent experience. He's there when he need, when he needs to be there. He doesn't get paid to be called out to look at a situation, and he's just a great guy to work with.
I'd happily move that we reappoint John Manchester as our Tree Warden, and send a letter of thanks to Will Walker for his interest.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Post. Motion carries. Town Administrator, updated fiscal 2013-14 proposed budget.
As you're well aware, I made some of the changes that were recommended by the council at the workshop that we had a week ago. And the results you have before you, I provided you with a reconciliation of the last total to this total. And there was also a question on the General Fund Reserve, and I've also provided you with that. In essence, the General Fund, if, if you take 3% for the charter of what this coming fiscal year's budget may be, three and a half percent, I mean, sorry, 3% would be $1,425,226. We have $1,798.55. So there is an excess over the charter requirement of $365,000. But there was also a policy that the previous council passed, which was to increase the General Fund Reserve, and for 2013-14, it should be at a 3.5% level. So going with that, 3 and 1/2% would be $1,662, and that would leave an excess of $128,000 in the General Fund, which is very close. Now, getting back to the changes in the budget from last meeting to this meeting. At the last meeting, we were at $18,599,000. We decided to add in a dump truck with a plow and sander, and that, over a five-year period, would be $44,500. And then we reduced the advertising by $20,000, eliminated the code enforcement part-time clerk, we eliminated the pump-out vote, eliminated the Haba Master Assistant, and we had now received the dental and health rates, and that added about $65,000. So now we're at $18,660,000, or an increase over last year's budget of 3.9%. Now, we can go through any of the details. Now, we can go through any of the details if you'd like to.
What was the justification for eliminating advertising?
That was for the zoning change, and we don't think that we'll possibly be ready for that in this fiscal, the next fiscal year. It would probably be right after that.
This is for our comprehensive plan and zoning amendments?
Yes.
If we don't budget for it this year, how are we going to?
We'll have to budget for it in the following year.
And put it together in six months?
We don't have any consulting services here for writing the plan?
Part of what we discussed back on the 18th, that, you know, I wanted to bring it up again here, because as it relates to the agenda item that I have later on in the meeting, I think it behooves us, if we have less than 24 months to pull this together, it behooves us to try to find some amount of funding to support getting the ball rolling on it, which I think in part drove the question around, you know, the surplus around the general fund. And I think it begs the question, to what extent we look at that surplus to try to cover such an item?
How would we do that?
I have no idea.
Well, essentially, how that would be done is we'd recommend to the budget committee that $20,000 be taken out of the general fund surplus.
Right.
Okay, well, we've got a two-pronged problem here. Number one, when I look at the comprehensive plan, that obviously, we've got to, we should be working on, and the zoning changes that, whether they're in this fiscal year or in the next, we do have to start looking at them. So I think we're going to have to somehow look at this number and see where we can do it. That's problem number one. Problem number two is a plus 3.9%. And I've looked at this six ways to Sunday, and I hope the rest of the council has too. We want what we want, at the same token, we want less. You know, so I think that, I hope that we can come up with a consensus of a number percentage-wise that we would like this budget to be, and then give it to Jim and have him go through it, excuse me, with a fine-tooth comb, and see where we can realistically cut and have some true savings, and then look at maybe borrowing or taking from the general fund. I think that's a last resort, as far as I'm concerned. I think that we have to look at this budget, and there are a lot of things in here that I know we want, we like, we probably absolutely need to have, but whether or not we can afford them and be fair to the taxpayers in this town, it has to be taken into consideration. So, I'll let you talk in a minute. So I've looked at it, and I'm, again, I'm just going to throw out a number. I'm saying 2.5% and see where we come. Maybe 3.
And where are we now? I forget.
3.9.
Now, Jim, if you look at the balances that the treasurer gave us in these accounts, some of these accounts still have 100% in there.
Yeah, because they spent it later on in the year.
Right, well, I know that, but what I'm saying is, is there a fair amount of money that will be put into the general fund, do you think, from this?
No.
You don't?
No. We, what's been going into the general fund at the end of the year has been lower and lower and lower this past year.
We were allowed to have carryovers. This year, we're not.
Right.
So, that makes somewhat of a difference, doesn't it?
It may, but I don't think for any large amount, okay, because we've also urged, you know, I'm sorry?
Yeah, everybody to try to spend on supplies.
Well, not to try to spend, but to try to buy things that are necessary next year out of this year's funds. I mean, we already have shortages in this year. I'm short in the liability account by some, I think it's $19,000. All right. I'm going to be taking, in the next meeting or the meeting after, I'm going to be looking to take a good portion of the future needs account to supplement the contracts negotiated for police and fire. So, that money will go. You know, there are different things that will be happening now that we'll need to deal with.
Jim, since you brought up the police pension improvement plan, I was actually going to bring that up, because I noted here on page nine that its recommended funding level is at $725,000, but if I look at the improvement plan itself, if I'm reading the numbers correct for the first eight years, yeah, it's at 700. So I didn't know if that was a nice little $25,000 typo, or?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And the reason for that is that, in past years, we have been unable to achieve the investment income, and I'm just trying to allow a little money for shortage in the investment income so we don't fall behind. I'm trying to stay ahead of it. I've also thought of, you know, reducing by 25,000 and bringing it back to the 700. But, you know, when we get, when we get an actuarial report in July or August, I'm afraid it's not going to show 7.5% investment income, especially with the fact that, you know, Bank of America is sort of like giving us the boot.
Okay.
All right, before going, get something quick.
Yeah, I just understand that. I'd just like to clear the air. I understand it's been the topic of discussion, the maintenance department, the maintenance vehicle, and I just wanted to explain exactly how that works. I feel kind of foolish here when we're talking penis with what you guys are just talking. But just to give you a brief summary, I own the truck, I buy the truck, and I also pay for the insurance on the truck. The town reimburses me or gives me $2,800 a year, which goes through payroll, so I really don't end up with that amount of money. They pay for any maintenance on a vehicle. Fortunately, the town has not had to pay for much maintenance because there have been brand-new trucks that trade them in every couple of years. The only thing they pay is for gas, oil, oil filters and air filters and things like that. Also, a concern that maybe I'm using the truck for my own personal properties. I can assure you, and I'll take any of you around, all the property that I own is within three blocks of my house, so I'm not using a whole lot of gas to get there to work on my apartments. People may see me on weekends and holidays with my truck, and they say, hey, there goes Bobby Martin. Yeah, burning uptown gas. Well, guess what? He's probably working down at Boogamash on his own time, volunteering, or like I did Thanksgiving, went down to an awkward school and let the people in. I didn't have to cook Thanksgiving dinner, so I didn't mind going there in the morning. Those are just some of the things that I wanted to bring up to people. Question was made, what about when you're on vacation? Well, as luck just had it, I was just on vacation, I missed that beautiful snowstorm that you people had. However, I left the truck with my helper, just in case something like that happened. So he had my truck the whole time I was away. The other thing that was brought up is about the tools, and the town buys $500 worth of tools. That's not correct. What happens is that $500 is in there, if I burn out a saw, I burn out a drill, the town replaces it. In the days when you used to sharpen saws, they paid for the sharpening of the saw, now we just replace the saw. Last year, as I told Jim this morning, last year, there was $300 left in that account, and he needed it really desperately for something or other, and I don't know why, I said, take it. Luckily, I didn't have a saw that burnt out. This year, currently, there's still $300 and some dollars in there, and we're over halfway mark of the year. I hope that's explained some of the questions, the tools that are in that truck belong to me, the big tools, the major tools, like the, and I've got a list of them, the snowblowers, the, there's a couple of weed whackers, the table saws, the radio alarm saw, the planer, yeah, that all belongs to the town, and I've got that whole list. Anybody is certainly welcome to come to my shop and take a look at it any time, day or night, just call me. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer. I know it's penny-annoy when you're talking millions, but you watch your pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. It says the council needs suggestions regarding some cuts or whatnot. Again, I think, my opinion is that we come up with a number and let the town administrator try to work into it.
I agree with you that it needs to be below 3%. 2% would be nice, but at least below 3%. And I don't have any, I wish I had suggestions.
I know.
What's that 0.9% equate to in dollars?
I just, I think it's helpful to have a dollar, just for even folks here.
Budget is $18,600,000.
About $186,000.
It's $18,660,000, so it's probably $170,000.
That would be the, yeah, that would be the point.
That's the rough 0.9% that you're trying to?
To get it to 3%.
Right.
I'd like it to be below.
Me, too.
What, I'm just looking, I know we talked two budget meetings ago about these salary line items and making them all consistent and having some kind of tool for raises. Is that, did we do that?
That's been done, yes. If you look at the future needs account, originally had $15,000 in there.
Thank you. Great, excellent. And what's the math behind that number? Is it just?
3%.
Okay.
With some, with a few adjustments.
I'm sorry, that 0.9 was, what, about $170,000?
About $170,000.
I mean, in dollar-wise, we're probably looking for 250, maybe a little more.
To get it to 2.5, yeah. You know, just keep in mind, we don't know where the school committee is either, so...
That's a good point.
And again, I mean, every time we discuss this, you know, things come up that we feel we really need, and so we say, well, we've got to have them, so we add them in. Unfortunately, we're not taking enough out to pay for some of these things. So we're going to have to look at where we can cut. And, you know, again, I think it's just logical, it's unfortunate, but we cannot, you know, afford a 3.9% increase.
I understand. You know, I'll, just because this is my first time going through the process here, I guess it certainly begs the question, you know, how best to meet our obligation to the taxpayers of the town, you know, in an environment where there's so much need and so much challenge in terms of reducing dollars and trying to hit certain percentages, are we better served trying to remove things for the taxpayer? Or, and I don't know how to conceptually do this, but if there's a certain amount of wiggle room with the general fund, certainly the argument is, is that, you know, putting those dollars to use for the taxpayers is an option, and I don't know which of those two options...
Well, one thing, first of all, we cannot take money out of the general fund. We have to ask the budget committee.
It has to be a resolution.
Understood.
And secondly, we have a policy that has been set forth regarding the reserves, which increases it every year. So it was at 3, now it should be 3.5. So if you take those numbers, it leaves roughly around $128,000 above what we need in reserves, and those reserves are actually there, God forbid, something major happens.
Sure.
I mean, if we had multimillion-dollar reserves, you know, we could look at that and say, well, gee, it's very simple to say, we need this, we need that, let's take it out of the reserves. I think that's a last-gasp effort, in my opinion, that I think we need to look at what we have to work with now and figure a way to get, maybe not all, but some of the things that we need, but in the same token, we're really going to have to look at other areas and really cut. And unfortunately, I think we're going to, we're going to throw that in Jim's lap and let him work up some numbers, and then we'll take a hard look at it and see, you know, whether it falls in place. But, you know, when you put the entire budget together, which we don't have control over, you know, a certain segment of it, we still have to be cognizant of the fact that it could be over 4%, you know, and that's something that we have to really look at, and whether or not we want to burden the taxpayers, you know, any more than we have to. I'm a very logical person, as much as I don't like to pay any more taxes than anyone else, I understand there are times when your taxes are going to go up, and, but I think it's our job to try to minimize how much it goes up. And I think, as much as I would like to look at the reserves and say, that's our little piggy bank, it really is not. That is for, God forbid, a major happenstance in town, you know, so I think that's something that we have to kind of keep in mind, that, yeah, if we had a lot more in there, I'd say, let's, you know, let's go before the budget committee, see what we can do, and say, you know, we need this, we need that, rather than burden the taxpayers with additional taxes, maybe we should take it out of there. Right now, I don't see a big dollar amount sitting in there that I think we can touch. Again, I mean, we may want to take out 20, you know, again, just for advertising, or whatever that case may be. But again, I think that's the last thing that we should be looking at. And I think we need to look at the numbers we have, based on the revenue we have, based on the things that we need to have, and say, something's going to give, you know, and see if we can come up with some workable numbers.
I think possibly the council, you know, needs to take a look at, do you want to reevaluate that policy and keep it at 3.5%? Or do something else with it, you know, delay it a year or something. In addition to that, over the past several years, we have been able to achieve a low increase percentage-wise of our budget, and it gets to the point where we neglect a lot of the things that we should in order to keep that percentage down. And eventually, it catches up. I mean, it's also our, I look at it as, I don't want to raise the taxes any more than I have to, okay? I understand what the people are going through out there, and it's also a situation where we owe them services. We've got, for example, plow trucks breaking down, and we've got people calling saying, why hasn't the plow been by my house yet? You know, where do you, you know, where do you, how do you do it? You can't buy the plows and keep the taxes down. It's a difficult situation at best, so, you know, where that line is, I don't know.
And I think that's very important, and I think that's why we need to look at the capital, the five-year capital plan, and I think that we have to set aside and figure out how do you work at that X amount of dollars is put into that fund and used, you know, whether you build it up and use it in two years or three years or five years to purchase those big capital items, but I think we need to look at that, and that's one of the reasons why you bring forth that five-year capital plan to us, you know, so we can look at that. But I think when you look at those numbers, we still have to figure a way to get some savings out of this particular budget.
I understand. I wouldn't disagree. I would just point out that this policy we did set is not such that it's mandatory each year, it's a goal or target percentage, and the language is fairly, I think purposely soft in that it says, "The town council shall endeavor to request annual budgets which facilitate reaching its goal to the extent practical with consideration to competing demands," you know, and it goes on with the following targets. So I think this is what we're working towards, certainly, but there are circumstances that maybe, from a year here and a year there, make it not practical to be hard and fast on this schedule. practical to be hard and fast on this schedule. It's an aggressive schedule. It gets us to 5 percent fairly quickly in 25 basis point increments annually. But that also, that language also leads me to remind us all that we are the first step in the municipal budgeting process. We are doing our diligence with the administrator to recommend a budget to the budget committee, who will recommend a budget to the voters of Tiverton. So I think we keep that in mind as well, that as much, that we would like to do as much as we can to control things, at the end of the day, the voters do have the last say as to what we do and what we don't do. So I always try to keep that context. I try to think of this as not creating or setting a budget, but recommending a set of spending priorities and what we think is the best path forward financially for the town. And to some extent, and it's not defeatist, but after that, it's somewhat out of our, out of our, you know, it's like when the child grows up and leaves the household, it's out of our hands somewhat, and it takes on its own character. So just to keep that in mind, I think, is a good context to have.
Yeah, I guess what I see, sorry. Go ahead. Okay. I guess what I see, to put out the similar point you made, Ed, was we have a lot of capital debt that's been accrued over probably, I don't know how many years. And it's come knocking on our door. And that's part of why we're looking at a 3.9 percent increase this year is to make up for some of that debt. And now, what we're facing is getting into a vicious cycle of never being able to catch up. With the five-year plan, there has to be a few of those years where something has to happen, where money does have to be spent to catch up. So the following years will be less. So what year is that? Is it this year, the next year, three years from now? It's going to be hard to say. And I'm with you, I don't want to increase the taxes this year, but we also have to look at what happens if we don't. What are we looking at next year? Looking at, you know, overfill this at next year, because if we don't take care of the things that we have this year, we'll be looking at next year. So that is something we have to really think about more, with a little bit of time that we have left.
Also, I forgot to ask, where are we on a revenue estimate? Are we, it's usually part of the conversation that we haven't quite had yet.
Our revenue, I believe, I...
Please, is here.
Our revenue up a little bit?
It's the estimate. No, I mean, it's up a little bit.
What's the number?
Our revenue estimate this year versus, I'm sorry, next year versus this year. I think it's increased a little.
What you submitted to the budget committee versus what we have now?
What we're looking at now.
I think it was up just slightly.
Yeah, up a little bit.
It hasn't, the estimate that we gave hasn't changed.
Yeah.
I just don't have it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, we haven't, in fees and other things that we can control, we haven't increased the revenue in those areas. So that, other than taxes coming in, and if there's any shortfall there, other than that, the revenue is staying almost stagnant.
And there was a little increase in the projected state aid from the governor.
Right.
It was the only change from, like, the estimate we put together in December.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I hate to be the dead horse, but I just want, I know you've taken out the $20,000 for the advertising for next year. I feel that even if you have to reduce it, it would be better than eliminating it altogether. Because you're trying to tie it into the fact that we don't have the money, that you won't be able to find money next year for the zoning rewrite. We discussed that a couple of the meetings, and it was suggested, Andy did write a memo which gives you a timeframe. But there is $15,000 right now sitting in a zoning rewrite account, and there is some surplus in some of my accounts. So if you could get that portion budgeted through this year, and it's put in an account that is able to, you know, you transfer it to an account that is able to sustain, to be able to finish using next year, but the advertising, even if you were to come up with the funds to do the contract to get the rezoning done, I can't carry forward that advertising money.
Right.
And it will take some advertising. I mean, and that's going to happen, whether all that zoning rewrite was done or not, I mean, you just have a lot out there. You've got all that form-based code that's out there and all. You start advertising those things, you're going to need advertising money. So I would hope that, you know, you consider, even if you have to cut it back, and we just have to kind of scrape through with what we can, it'd be better than eliminating it altogether. I don't know how you'll accomplish it without advertising money, unless you do not intend to, you know, do your comp plan or your rezoning. But I think you could handle this year. I mean, you have $15,000 sitting right in the zoning account for rewrites this year, in this year's budget. And the only, I know Jim is scraping from accounts and keeping everybody watching with this thing, but the only account that I have, I can't imagine even the budget committee opposing it, is that I have some funds in the election account that were not used, and maybe we could, you know, be able to use some and then put the rest back in the general fund. But it goes with what you're saying, Denise, try to get some done this year. You might really want to think hard about that.
So started before.
Well, I think, obviously, that's the areas that Jim's going to have to take a look at. And, you know, like I said, maybe it's 10 instead of 20. And then we'll have to find 10 somewhere else, you know, I'm just saying. So those are the type of things that we have to look at. And I'm not sure if Mr. Tight says anything he wanted to add regarding zoning in the comp plan.
No, I just, as I indicated in the memo, I think it is important to keep the timeframe in mind, because if you do miss this coming year, you really are not going to have the time between July 1 of 2014 and November of 2014 to do it. So some of the work is going to have to be done. And as Nancy indicated, you're going to need the advertising stuff in the year before, the 2013, 2014. You've got the challenge grant, which you get 80 percent from, from the state on the form-based zoning for Main Street and whatnot. You don't want to have that just sit on the shelf. You want to be able to advertise it. And that'll probably cost a little more to advertise with various mapping as well. So you want to be able to get that stuff advertised next year. And maybe what's, some stuff that could be done in this fiscal year before July might be possible as well.
Do we, do we have a sense of what that $15,000 plus whatever is, you know, might be sitting in another, like, how much of the process does that get us?
I have no idea.
Well, why don't you speak?
When you're talking about comp plans, well, you get two separate things. Your comp plan doesn't need a complete rewrite. Your comp plan needs an update. There's a fair amount of grunt work involved, because you have to have the data to satisfy the state and Rhode Island housing. Got to get the new census data in there, the new build-out data of your building permits. You've got a lot of statistical analysis, data work that's going to be done upfront. Then you have policy decisions, and then you have the actual drafting. You can do some of that with volunteer work. It's hard to get volunteers to do all the statistical work and pulling together there. And you're obviously shorthanded as far as the department goes already. You don't have the staffing in the department even that you normally have. So you have to keep dealing with every subdivision and land development project that comes in the door, because if you don't, they'll be approved by default, so you have to deal with them and keep putting that other stuff aside. So your comp plan is probably, I would think, in $25,000 to $40,000 range to update the comp plan, using volunteers, planning board and whatnot for the policy and some of the drafting, and hiring someone to do the data stuff and pulling it all together at the end. The zoning ordinance is different. I think the Tiverton zoning ordinance needs a major rewrite. Almost toss it out and redo a lot of it. And I've said this before, and I've said it in the memo, I think the town was at a point when the zoning ordinance was written where there wasn't agreement on substance. And so consequently, the town relied on procedure to govern development in the town, which led to lawsuits and so forth. I think, I get a sense that there's at least more of a consensus now on the substance. I think that you could have a good ordinance in place. I think it could be a hybrid. The town of Tiverton is not going to go all form-based, because you're not going to hire three or four more people in your planning department to regulate, to institute a form-based code. But I think you'd have a good hybrid between the stuff that the CISO group is doing now and a standard Euclidian zoning ordinance. And then when you look at it, it's kind of like, you know, when you go to buy a suit. You can go and just buy it off the rack and, you know, have the cuffs and the hems on the pants and so forth done, and it's one price. You know, you can go for the semi-custom, where they measure you and order it in Hong Kong and come in and it fits it to you. Or you can go all the way completely custom, every bit, every hand stitch. You know, I don't think the town of Tiverton needs the hand-stitched one, I don't think it's worth it. My experience in writing the ordinance, I think you could do a fairly good job with a semi-custom one. Not off the rack, but semi-custom, taking things, we're not reinventing the wheel here, a lot of the stuff's been done in other places. It just needs, there's two things that it needs. One is it needs someone who's experienced to be able to fit it together and not have a hodgepodge of old and new in the ordinance. It's all going to be a nice, easily readable ordinance for laymen. And then the second thing is working to have a multifaceted zoning rewrite committee, which could be the same as the comp plan rewrite supervisory committee, that has, that has town council members on it, has a couple, has three town council members on it, has planning board members, has a broad-based, has developers, has people who don't want any development. You've got to get that broad-based committee so that you can develop the consensus there, so that you're not just going out in a vacuum, drafting it, and then bringing it to you at the end. And then everybody will come up and complain about something about it. And so that will take some time. There will be a fair amount of meetings involved with that group and the public to work on the consensus and to translate what the comp plan says you want the town to look like into a zoning ordinance that says, how do we get there? So numbers, I think, you know, I think $30,000 to $50,000 could get you a decent zoning ordinance over a two-year time period, over a two fiscal year time period. That's what I would, you know, that's my estimate. You could obviously spend a lot more, you probably couldn't spend much less than that.
And then the advertising is a third line item on top of all of that.
Advertising is another question, right.
Okay.
Because you've got to advertise it for three weeks. Now, you don't have to advertise the entire ordinance.
Sure.
But to the extent you're doing map changes, you do have to advertise the maps. And, I mean, we lump it in in advertising, but the state law, everybody, each year, they talk about changing it, but still requires certified return receipt mailing on a map change. So that's at like $5.95 or $6 per person, everyone, you got to send a certified, yeah, within several hundred feet. And, I mean, like, when we did Main Road and picked up the Starwood condominium, there's a couple of thousand dollars in certified mailings just because of that. So that's why you need the advertising money in there. It's advertising and notice.
And does, hypothetically, does getting a full-time planner back on board decrease the potential costs here? Because it's absorbed by his or her day-to-day obligations or duties?
Um, yes and no. I mean, I think it depends on who you get. I mean, clearly, if you have more, I mean, Kate's doing it now, and I don't want to, you know, there's only so much one person, any person can do. So obviously, yes, if you have, if you have two people, if you have two people in there, then obviously that helps, that does provide extra manpower to do the legwork and preparation, scheduling and so forth. So I would say, I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is not easy. Again, if it's the wish of the council that we give Mr. Goncalo a target of 3 percent or lower, and have him come back at our next council meeting, which is the 11th, I believed? Is it the 11th? And then there, we'll just have to rip it to shreds and really take a hard look, but at least there, we'll have a starting point. Obviously, Jim, you know, you're going to have to look at some of the things that have been requested, some of the things that are important, and everything's important to somebody, you know, so, and, you know, take a long, hard look at those. Obviously, we had some concerns now about the advertising, so maybe we put in a portion of that. And again, and it's not an easy task, but I think you're going to have to just go through this with a fine tooth comb.
I will.
And then come back, we'll take a look at it. We've got till the 17th?
15.
Laura? 15.
Sorry.
You don't know, Laura?
I believe it's the 15th.
The 15th, okay. You know, to finalize it, so be prepared that at that 11th meeting, well, I may be calling for a special meeting to, again, to just finalize the budget before we actually send it off. But again, I think these numbers are just too critical for us to just, you know, say, okay, get down to a number without looking at where the impact is going to be. And unfortunately, Jim, we're going to put that onus on you to get those numbers, and we may tell you that we don't like it. And, you know, you might have to burn the midnight oil, or actually, the 1 a.m. oil, because I think you're already burning the midnight oil. So we'll have to, you know, really take a look at that.
Should we meet next week?
I would love to, but I'm on a flight at 6 a.m. tomorrow morning.
You can conference in. No, forget I said that.
Yes, Laura?
I just wanted to mention on the revenue topic, that the budget committee is, with every department head, going through the revenue estimates, and we have some history care of the treasurer, so we are going through that exercise, looking at all the different line items, and we do come up with some adjustments here and there, and we'll be looking at that through the April whatever deadline that we have.
Yeah.
So that is being looked at. I just wanted to reassure everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, my only concern with the revenues on a purely policy basis, that trickles its way down into our budgeting exercise, is we are now, we have pushed it several meetings, but we are going to be talking a great deal about our fee schedule and our fee structure for permits, for violations, for all of these things. It's coming up soon.
Public care is on March 25th.
Yeah, so, any, any lateral movement in any of those items has a direct bottom-line impact on our budget.
Yeah, I was not aware of that. If you're considering fee changes and increases, strongly encourage you, if at all possible, to move that up if you can.
We've already pushed it back a number of times.
I don't have any, we just changed our fee, we just amended that fee resolution a year ago.
Last year, yeah.
And I believe, Jim, you've sent out several notices to your department heads, and I do not have, the building official has nothing, we have some minor things, but no, I don't, I don't even have any out of the clerk's office that you're looking for. We just increased everything a year ago. I don't know how much.
And Recreation is going to be discussing theirs tomorrow evening at their meeting.
So you might have one or two, but not many.
Yeah, I don't think any, if there are any changes, I don't think they have a great impact. I don't think there'll be a major impact on revenue.
Okay.
Okay. So if it's the wish of the council, we direct the town administrator to work these numbers and come to 3 percent or below. And then at the 11th meeting, we will go through those and see where we go from there.
You need a motion.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm trying to think of the percentage. I make a motion that the... I make a motion that the town administrator looks over the budget and tried to get the percentage increase below three percent.
We have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
And we have a second discussion.
Do we have any guidance whatsoever?
Well, we have.
As far as, to Jim, as to what areas?
I'm not envious of his motion going forward.
Well, we have had several discussions.
Yeah, I think what Jim's going to have to do, and I think he knows from our previous meetings, there are certain areas that have been impacted that people keep saying, this is what we need, this is what we need, this is what we need. And we're going to have to look at those areas and maybe not fulfill the entire need. And, you know, maybe reduce those or find where we can save dollars somewhere else to fulfill that particular need.
There you go.
It's not an easy task, Jim. Like I said, you know, and again, and hopefully you will come back with something that we're all going to take a look at. And then the onus will be on us to look at those numbers and either work them more or agree with them.
And meanwhile, we can still be looking, all of us.
Right, yeah, and all of us can still be looking at any areas.
Because I've talked to you about a couple of things.
So, we have a motion and you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor? Opposed?
If I can just indicate that my email works all the time. So, if you're, if you come up with any ideas during the night, jump on your computer.
And winning the lottery is not one of them, Jim.
I just have one request. I remember in last year's budget process, we actually had a schedule of vehicles, what the model year was, how much mileage was on it, you know, when it was purchased. If we could have that, because the last time we met, we added a dump truck. And I really don't have any feeling for what the rest of the fleet looks like for the DPW. So, I'd like to see that for fire, police, and the DPW. I know you have the information, I just, we don't have the information. So, I think it behooves us to have that information to make informed decisions on the capital budget. I could request that. Thank you.
Just to clarify, we have three police cars in this year's budget?
Yes.
Did we take one out?
Maybe SUVs, yeah. We took it out and then we put it back.
And to keep within the same discussion, before we get to the approval of the Police Pension Funding Improvement Plan, I'm going to, I'm going to request a motion that we take G1 and move it up into F, which is the advertising for position of town planner, since it kind of falls within the budget anyway, so we can discuss it at the same time.
So, move.
Second, a motion second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. Okay. Councilor Gerlach?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, on the heels of many of our budget discussions, the topic of moving forward with hiring a new full-time town planner has come up. And from where I sit, there's a lot of critical activity that's planned for discussion over the next twelve to twenty-four months that I think, from my vantage point, the town would benefit greatly from having a planner involved. So, we're talking about the comp plan rewrite, the zoning rewrite, if anything moves forward on the industrial park. I'm sure there's, we could rattle off a half dozen more. My understanding is that the position is budgeted for. So, I would like to move forward with advertising and trying to fill that position.
Are you making that as a motion?
Well, I like opening up for discussion. I mean, we can hop right to a motion if you want, but...
I'll second the motion.
For a discussion.
Sure.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
If I may, I am not opposed to having a town planner. I assume that it's necessary. But as I've mentioned to Jim a couple of times, and maybe I'm the only one that has this problem, I've told Jim I really don't understand what the responsibilities are of the town planner. I don't know where to go to look to get that information. Of course, I understand broadly speaking that a planner plans, but I'd like to get something a little bit more concrete than that. I really don't understand the relationship of the town planner with the planning board, with Mrs. Michaud, who's the administrative assistant to the board. I don't understand what the relationship of the planner is with the building officials. And I don't try, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, Jim, but when I asked you that question, I think your answer was, well, they're supposed to all work together. The only thing that I would request at this point is, before we vote, I'd like to see the ad, which I assume will give me some better understanding of what the heck is involved here. And two, I'd like to get a presentation, Jim, briefly, of what you see as the responsibilities of the town planner and what his relationship is to the other individuals and groups that I've just mentioned. And I'd like to get some assurance from you, or perhaps Mr. Tights, that we in fact have the appropriate structure for these various responsibilities. And I've always had some question as to whether or not that is in fact the situation. If you believe that we need as a town planner, another one-man department, you may be absolutely right. But I'd like to feel a little bit more comfortable on that issue before I vote.
Mr. Lambert, I agree. And one of the other items that I was going to bring up is a review of what that job description is, so that we're all clear and see if that needs to be adjusted in light of what the town has before it over the next couple of years and beyond.
I will, for the next meeting, I will provide you with the advertisement and the job description that we have.
We had a town planner.
No, 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 I understand, but, you know, I just...
No, and again...
Environment has changed.
Right. And I think along with that, Jim, also, we have to be sure of what the qualifications are going to be for that position.
And I'd like to just also request that we have, since they work closely with the planning board, I think we need their input into their consensus as to whether, what the job is, what is needed. I'd like to hear from them as well.
I was thinking as a staff...
Mrs. Bellattier?
Well, there are interns in the School of Architecture at Roger Williams.
We can't at this, we can't at this point. Okay. And I'm going to ask Mr. Gerlach if you amend your motion and make it that you're asking the town administrator to provide information for the next meeting.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to request the town administrator to provide the council with the advertisement and the job description for, the current job description for the position of town planner.
With the input.
Yeah, with the input of the planning board.
Second. I think that was...
I don't know if I can provide the input from the planning board that quickly.
Do your best.
Okay.
I think if we can request the planning board, put it on their March 5th agenda as an item to get consensus on position of town planner.
Call them up and request, you know, at least a representative be here.
Yes.
I was going to say, there's some of us here that...
So, I think if you can amend the motion to...
Sure. I'll also amend that with the request that the planning board put an agenda item on their March 5th meeting to discuss the position of a full-time planner.
And then request someone can come to our eleventh meeting.
And request that someone from the planning board attend our March 11th meeting as part of the discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. I will ask you to read that back to us, Nancy.
Yes, she'll get it. So, it's town administration.
All right, back to town administrator. Approval of the Police Pension Funding Improvement Plan.
I am just recusing myself.
Hold on a few minutes. Mr. Goncalo?
Yes, back around the end of November, I'm sorry, the end of October, beginning of November, I indicated to the town council that we had a funding improvement plan that we were, that had been approved by the police pension board, and we were forwarding it to the state for review. The state has contacted us and would like some kind of resolution that you were presented with it and that you agree with it, so that they can complete their file. And that's the item you see as F3, resolved by the town council of the town of Tiverton that the funding improvement plan for the Tiverton Police Pension Plan is hereby approved.
Okay, any questions?
When I was reading through this, it sounded like you got the funding, the additional funding to the 700 K by using the landfill 168 K.
No, ma'am. We did not do that. It's in the plan? On page... The $168,000 was removed from the budget by the budget committee.
Right, but as part of this plan, this document here, it says additionally, "To address the funding needs of the town's landfill, the town has successfully implemented a pay-as-you-throw program. By generating this alternate source of revenue that directly offsets the landfill appropriation, we were able to allocate additional funds to offset the increase in the pension fund contribution." So, I read this as being, we use the landfill 168 K to fund the difference between the 550 and the 700.
Right. That was not really the case. I know that's what's in there, but in the writing of this, the, I believe this was done by McLeod and Nichols, that rationale.
I see what reads there, Joan, and I think it was rooted incorrectly. Because I think what they were saying was that they budgeted the additional 200,000, knowing that they didn't have $168,000 that they were going to be putting into the landfill, which shouldn't have been in there in the first place.
The treasurer may have better recollection than I do.
Hi.
When the study permission, they gave us all guidelines that we had to follow to do the improvement plan. And one of them, they wanted to know, how did you come up with any additional funds if that was part of your plan? So, to, in an attempt to explain to them, you know, we didn't raise taxes or we didn't cut expenses, we reallocated some of the funds. And that was one of the things that could demonstrate that we didn't take away from something. We had implemented this new pay-as-you-throw program, which allowed us to fund the landfill. And by the same token, we were able to increase our funding to the pension fund. So, I think it's semantics, really.
Right, because technically, we did not take...
No.
That's what I'm saying. So, I think this is a little misleading in the way it's written, because it does give you the impression that because we didn't fund the 168, we took that 168 and put it into the police pension plan, which is not what we did.
Not what we did.
Okay, so...
We didn't fund the 168, but we implemented the pay-as-you-throw program, which was successfully funding the landfill. And then we could allocate some funds from ourselves.
Yeah. Joan, I don't like the word "in..."
I read the same.
It's misleading. To me, it's saying, because we don't have to pay over here, we paid over there, we didn't have to increase taxes. Well, yeah, we took out the 168, but I don't, if you're saying it didn't go to the pension fund, then in effect, we did increase taxes to put in the extra money into the pension fund.
Well, we increased, we increased the budget. Yes, we did.
So, this is incorrect.
From 550,000, as I recall, to 700,000.
Right.
Okay. But it wasn't, it was not at the expense of the 168. I know exactly what you're saying.
Right.
And it reads just like that.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I have an issue with the way that's written.
And that adds up to it.
Because what we did was, we budgeted an additional 200,000 to make up to the 700. We didn't...
150, yeah.
150. We didn't take the 168 and move it over.
No.
So, I think that that portion, I don't know, needs to be deleted or a new explanation is written.
So, why didn't we say that we were increasing taxes to cover the 150 K? Because that's what we did.
She's right.
Well, it was part of the entire budget. You know, we can't, we can't, we can't pinpoint and say, we raised the budget by 150,000 to cover that, okay? Because there were other things that went up and down. You know, some of the, there were some of the, and I can't recall which ones they are now, but there were some items that went down, that decreased, that, you know, allowed us to increase over here. You know what I mean? It's not that we...
But the overall budget went up.
Right. The overall budget bonus went up.
Right. You did increase the budget. I don't think you decreased the budget anywhere by 150 K. Except for the landfill.
Well, no, the landfill was not us.
That's the budget we have.
Right. And I think if you look at the sentence before it, it actually says that. So, the impact of this increase was already planned for this year's budgetary process, going from 550 to 700,000. I think the next paragraph...
Was just citing an example of shifting money.
Yeah. I think that should go, because we technically didn't really shift money from pay-as-you-throw to the police pension plan. You know, I mean, we increased a line item in the budget, okay? Where that money came from, we, you know, we didn't actually, because we lost 168,000. It's not like we had it and just moved it somewhere else. You know, we increased the pension plan by 150, and we lost 168. So, it wasn't like we had 168,000 that we moved.
Well, it wasn't really planned either. We lost the 168.
Right. So, I'm saying that that paragraph needs to go away completely.
It wasn't like, it was planned.
Number one, and an explanation is that, I mean, as you said in the previous one, you planned this increase in our budget. I mean, what can you tell them? And, you know, you can just say that, you know...
You're talking about the last paragraphs on the...
Right here.
Yeah, on the financial, the plan page.
Right here.
Yeah.
In the future funding?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, because in a way, you kind of answer it, answer it as you go further, because you say, "The impact of that increase has been mitigated by prudent management of our expenses." So...
I think we were looking to quantify...
Yeah, yeah. And I understand trying to say, but again, I think that the pay-as-you-throw just...
Was just misleading.
Yeah, it's misleading, because we really did not move 168,000 over. That disappeared.
It disappeared, but we supplemented it.
Right. We increased a budget line item.
Right.
Okay? So that needs to go, and, you know, if you just want to explain, you know, with the Town Administrator, how, you know, the entire budget was reworked in order to, you know, find funds and so forth, but not, not specific to, especially pay-as-you-throw.
Can this be changed? This has already been filed with the state, correct?
Yes.
So I don't think it can be changed.
We can find out.
Yeah, obviously it can't be, because the resolution can, you know, you don't have the resolution yet, so it's not a completed document until they get the resolution from us.
Right.
So I would send them addendum.
They've been working with all the towns and cities to, I mean, to get all of this paperwork filed, and they actually haven't, they've been happy with what we submitted so far.
So far, yeah.
We met all the deadlines and...
There are some communities that haven't submitted their plans yet.
Well, again, then I would make the suggestion that we remove that paragraph completely. And if you want to quantify it somehow, you know, through the budgetary process, you know, we're able to increase that line item, but...
They were looking to see that we were going to increase it and at least stay level.
Yeah.
And, you know, keep the funding as planned.
Yeah. You know, so, but again, that's going to go. And then when, I would suggest that this come back on the 11th.
Okay.
And with those changes, and at that time, we'll look at the resolution. All agreed?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. Tiverton Yacht Club Attorney Kenneth Tremblay requests amendment to zoning ordinance, Article 6 of the District Regulation, Section 7. We have a memorandum from the town solicitor. I don't know, Jeannie or Andy?
Well, in the absence of Mr. Tremblay, I gather, in his request, he had asked to address the council, but the gist of it is, we have an amendment, revised amendment for the Tiverton Yacht Club seeking a zoning amendment. We've been informed by the administrative officer previously that the planning board is unable to render an advisory opinion due to conflict with the majority of their members. So consequently, what I'm suggesting is that this be referred to several other boards for advisory opinions. These are advisory-only. You, the Town Council, are still the finder of fact. You're going to have the public hearing. All evidence will be presented to you, but at least get there, those boards lay experience based on their service to the town, being the zoning board, Conservation Commission, the Harbor Commission, and the Waste Water Management Commission, the last one in particular, since it's dealing with septic systems. And request that they provide you with that, and also have given you a couple of proposed dates for public hearing, suggesting April 10th, if that's available. The clerk and I were working to try to come up with a date after you're through with the, getting the budget process set, but before you get into all the FTR stuff, and she gets into all of the FTR stuff. And April 29th is your tentative workshop night anyway, as a fifth Monday of the month, so we'd hold that as a backup night if it ran more than one night.
Okay, and you're suggesting that we request the high school?
No. If we have it as the only item, I'm not sure that it's going to overflow it. The high school auditorium was, there were a lot of people there, but it wasn't in any means full. We don't think it's necessary, if they're only, if it's, to be blunt about it, if they're only people who are coming here and going to speak, as opposed to just filling it up with numbers, then we should be adequately provided with room here at the Town Council chambers. I think the high school is just a bad venue for trying to do a hearing like that, with people being able to hear and communicate in the sightlines. So we thought we should try it here. And we'd also ask the various bodies to get their advisory opinion back to us by Monday, April 8th. One of the reasons that we went out so far as we did to the 10th was because it's too late to get on the zoning board agenda this month, but this would allow it to get up the zoning board agenda at the beginning of April and get an opinion to us in time to the council.
Okay. So if there's no objections, then...
There is.
I'm sorry, this is not an open hearing. So if there's no objections, we will, Mr. Campbell, I respect you, but this is not an open hearing.
This is a new amendment. It just was five. Just have a point in process.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Campbell, there will be a hearing scheduled probably April 10th.
Well, that's what I'm getting to. You've got five weeks, you've got four boards you're sending out to, you're going to have it all done in five weeks, four boards. It's a brand-new end.
It's not, it's not a hearing.
So we're not following process as always.
Mr. Campbell, it is not an open hearing. Thank you.
Tiverton Planning Board can't hear this. There are not...
Mr. Campbell, I will ask you, I will ask you to be removed if you won't be silent.
So let me get this straight. What are the boards that we need to go to? The zoning board...
Conservation...
Conservation and Waste Water Management and Harbor and Coastal Water Management.
Conservation, Waste Water Management, and the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission.
Yes, yes. And we've, that's one of the reasons we put the timeout, so they'll all be able to put it on their regular monthly meeting. We're expecting, we're not expecting that they're going to have a case presented before them. They're not hearing it, they're simply giving you the advisory opinion. If the planning board were still involved, then if, to the extent that this is a new amendment, it would be referred to the planning board. But we did that before and took several months, and we have advisory opinions, and we have the formal communication from the planning board, so that's why it's not being referred back to the planning board. The Town Council is going to have to make its own determination on consistency with the comprehensive plan, based on all the evidence that's presented before. And I don't expect any of these bodies to be talking in general about the comprehensive plan consistency, only with regard to their specific area of expertise and their part of the comp plan.
Right, and only in an advisory.
Only advisory, right. And if they don't, and consequently, that's why we've set the schedule. If for some reason, they don't come to a decision, either they can't agree, or they don't, if any of these boards do not get their opinion to you, you'll still go ahead on April 10th, but you're giving them a decent amount of time to be able to do it.
Okay.
And get the input.
And this would normally occur, the planning board would normally go out to these boards and commissions and get the information from them and just correlate it and...
Actually, not necessarily. The planning board would look at it from the comprehensive plan. They could perhaps refer it out to them, but it's not, they wouldn't ordinarily refer it out to them. It might be the council that might or might not refer it out, as you always have the authority to do. But the planning board would probably be looking at it itself. This is, this is kind of a substitute for the planning board. And obviously, there isn't anything that prohibits any of these others. Some of them, I believe, weighed in on the previous amendment, you know, on their own. So we're taking the step of sending it to them, letting them know where the schedule is, and saying, "If you want your opinions heard on this, get it to us by that May 8th, April 8th date, excuse me."
And we believe that that's enough time for them to turn...
That will allow them all to put it on their regular monthly agendas over the next month.
If they need more time, what if we...
If they need more time, they can communicate it to you, and then it's up to you to decide. And as I indicated too, I don't know that you'll get through with it in, even if we get through the whole hearing on April 8th, I would expect you might be continuing it till the 29th to deliberate and whatnot. You might leave the hearing open, and you might have more time then. This is the initial target that's provided. You can certainly decide to extend the time when you got there.
The special meeting, it would be April 10th, you're talking about?
April 10th, yes. I'm sorry. April 8th is when we're asking them to respond, so you'll have it before the hearing, a couple of days before.
And an alternate is the, if we need one, an extra one is the 4/29.
The 4/29. And if you need more, we'll pick another one, although at that point, we're probably going to be jumping towards the end of May to get past the Financial Town referendum.
Let's see, so actually, we have one more meeting before you need to know to advertise, correct?
Oh, the public hearing?
Yeah.
Is this the April, April 10th?
Yeah, yes. Right, because we have to advertise three weeks in a row.
What are the dates they gave us?
Yeah, yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that we would have...
I think actually, no, I think we're going to have, it'll be the thing, it'll be like, it'll be the Tuesday, the Monday at 5:00 of when you're meeting.
Yeah.
So we will be going ahead with the advertising based on your decision tonight. The first ad. Because there's a double, there's a double whammy. There's the once-a-week-for-three-weeks, which the zoning-enabling act requires, and because technically, the zoning ordinance is an ordinance, there's the charter requirement of 21 days, which actually, because of the schedule of the newspaper publication, is a little bit longer sometimes than that three weeks.
Right.
So the ad will be running, the ad will be going over to the paper on March 11th, probably, to run that week.
Okay. Any discussion?
Did you move, did you...
Move, move. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we schedule a public hearing regarding the Tiverton Yacht Club. Thank you. I would move that the Town Council hereby refer the attached proposed amendment submitted by Kenneth Tremblay Esquire on behalf of the Tiverton Yacht Club, Inc., and Franklin D. Reposa, Peter Core, and Richard Toolen as trustees under Declaration of Trust dated May 6, 1957, parentheses, "The amendment to the zoning, Tiverton zoning, no, I'm sorry, to the Tiverton zoning ordinance to the following bodies: zoning board, Conservation Commission, Waste Water Management Commission, Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission. Each board and commission set forth above is requested to discuss the amendment and by a majority vote render the, an advisory opinion to the Town Council on the merits or demerits of the amendment. The discussion shall be at a public meeting, but not a public hearing. The chair of each board and commission may allow, but is not required to allow, public comment during such discussion. To be considered by the Town Council, all advisory opinions must be received in writing by the town clerk no later than 12:00 noon on Monday, April 8, 2013."
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, Town Administrator.
This is regarding the model contract, of course. When we received the decision from the Labor Board, I indicated that we would be revising, I was going to submit a revised model contract to the council for review and approval. I have worked with the department heads to revise the contract, and you have a draft before you. Now, once we had discussed the model contract, I indicated that I would send it forward to the solicitor for review, and there was one change that the solicitor felt we should have, and that was in 18, and that was the last sentence. Failure to notify the employee shall result in the employee becoming an employee at will. Prior to that, the words were something as though the contract would automatically...
Renew.
Renew, right. And the solicitor felt that none of the contracts should automatically be reviewed. Now, the department heads feel that being an employee at will is not consistent with their wishes, okay? But they have been an employee at will now for more than a couple of years, and we don't see a problem with it. So as a result of the solicitor's comments, I felt that that was fine, and that's what you have before you. Other than that, I believe we have agreement with all the employees regarding the balance of the contract.
We don't have a red line copy?
No, this was a total new generation.
To answer the question about the red line, I just want to point out that the previous contract was with a different angle on it to begin with. Basically, the previous contract that the council had, the previous council had developed, was essentially an at-will contract. It provided that the employees could be terminated without cause. That was what the previous contract was. It provided certain severance payments, but they could all be terminated without cause. So it was coming from an entirely different place than this contract is, which is a basic contract, a three-year contract with provisions for termination, but only with cause. So that's why it doesn't really fit into a red line thing, because it's a totally different issue. And as to the at-will thing, that's, all that is, is just to the saying that it's non-renewal, and I will amplify what the administrator says. It's my advice on any contracts that the town enters into, whether it be for a postage meter, or a copy machine, or an employment contract, that it shouldn't automatically renew. There's no reason why it can't be renewed by an action of the town, mutual consent, but if it somehow slips through the cracks, it shouldn't automatically renew for any period of time, particularly for three years. That's my advice on these contracts.
To sort of talk about that for a second, in the event that it does slip through the cracks, we, it may be felt that we are penalizing the employee because of that.
Now, then the employee has, you know, somewhat of an affirmative duty to bring it before the then-administrator and say, "My contract's expiring. I'd like to renew it," you know, so that it's brought to the attention. And there's nothing, there's no reason why it can't be renewed before or after, as in fact, what it's doing here now. It's just preventing a default, if you will. If we do nothing, it renews. It's turning it the other way. It doesn't say, "If we do nothing, the person is fired."
Right. What protection does that, I mean, specifically, what does that address? Because, you know, reading, I mean, if you become an at-will, your salary and your benefits and things presumably stay the same. What is the, what is the virtue of having it, you know, an automatic default to an at-will employment situation, eliminating this contract? What are the practical implications of that happening?
I'm not sure what the...
My question is, if you are, the contract goes away, and you're now an at-will employee.
Right.
I mean, you have certain benefits and salary and vacation days, et cetera, et cetera, that continue, presumably.
That's correct. There's no change, right.
And so my question is, what is the virtue of having it default to an at-will arrangement?
Well, I think there's two things. One is, if that line wasn't there, if that last sentence was not there at all, that's what would happen by law anyway. When the contract was up, the employee would become an at-will employee, if that line wasn't there. The only reason that line is there explicitly was because there was previously a line there that said, "Failure of the town to notify will result in an automatic renewal." So I didn't want there to be ambiguity of saying, of taking that out. We don't have, we don't even have a human resources director as an individual person. It's part of the town administrator's duties. There could be many reasons that this wouldn't happen, and might get overlooked, or might slip through the cracks, or get put aside, budget period, other things that might come up, hurricane, any number of reasons. And I don't feel that the town should be saddled with the responsibility, then, okay, it automatically, you know, okay, we just keep quiet about it, and it automatically renews for three years. I don't think that serves the public interest. If there's a desire to renew the contract with the employee, this isn't going to make any difference at all, but it shouldn't be happening as a default, that the town is automatically, you know, stuck. As I said, it's the same thing when we get these contracts with the equipment, the copiers and things like that, and they want to put in automatic renewal. It's like, no, I don't think that should be the case. If you're a contract, you have a contract with us, it's up, we want to have the ability to affirmatively make the decision. Do we want to keep this copier for another three years? Do we want to keep this employee for another three years?
Okay. I don't, I don't know what to think about that just yet, but...
Well, it's your, it's your call. I'm just explaining my, my theory, my rationale for it.
We have some experience.
And it's nothing against any of the particular employees.
Certainly not, and it's nothing against, we're professionals. So, what I'm saying, I suppose, is that I agree, there is no, if there is an interest in renewing the contract, there is no reason why that conversation should, shouldn't happen. But we currently have all but two of our department heads without contracts for various reasons, and have done, have been for quite a long time, as long as I've been on the council. So, it's not some harebrained, you know, doomsday scenario, you know, it's, it's what we're working with right now. We have a lot of people working for us that don't have contracts. So, okay.
When I, I mean, people think of the government as civil service. I worked in the federal judiciary for several years, and other than the judges who are appointed for life, everybody else there serves at the pleasure of their appointing officer.
I don't, I don't disagree, you know.
I mean, the real value of a contract, I think, is when you're trying to, you know, fill a vacancy, and you're trying to lure a good person to leave another job, or leave another area of the country even, and they don't want to pull up stakes and make that big move without knowing they have some sort of security. So, this way, you have a contract that provides it, gives people a reasonable period of time, three years, and that they can only be terminated by, for cause, so they have some job security. So, you know, that's where the real value to the town comes in. Other than that, the real value now is to the employees, that they don't have it now, and they would be getting that three years.
I actually have a, a couple of questions to that, and also one other thing about the with cause. It's listed for a felony or a convicted misdemeanor.
But not any misdemeanor.
So, all right, well, doesn't it say that?
Yes.
In the language, exactly.
Conviction of a misdemeanor relating to the official duties of the employee or violating the public trust.
So, what does that exactly mean?
So, if someone is charged with a DUI or speeding, it could be a misdemeanor, that's not necessarily related to their duties, although I suppose if the, if the police chief is charged with a DUI while driving, you know, his official car, that might be something relating to the duties.
On my own car.
But for the most part. I would say violation of the public trust. If anybody, any of our employees who handle money is convicted of a misdemeanor for embezzling funds from their church, even if it's less than five hundred dollars, I would say that's, that's a violation of the public trust. Or, you know, if someone get, the other example, if someone gets into a fight in the bar, that's not necessarily relating to the duty. If they get into a fight with a customer over the counter in their office here, then I think that's relating to their duties. That's, that's the intent there.
And as far as the at-will, I mean, what does that say to the employees that we have now, to suggest that we want to keep them?
Well, I think what it says that you want to keep them is the fact that you're going to offer them a three-year contract.
And I don't disagree about the automatic renewal three-year contract, I mean, they shouldn't do that, anyway. But what's to say that it can't just continue on your old contract until yours is renewed?
Well, that's, that's what I...
That's what they are. That's effectively what's happening.
That's what...
But it's not keeping them for three years.
But we have language that says that they could be at-will, so...
Right, which is, which is what happens by law when the contract expires, anyway. But they don't suddenly, you know, lose all their benefits or pay or anything like that.
No, but they could lose their job.
They don't. The town would still have to affirmatively notify them that you were not renewing their contract, for them to lose the job. If the town does nothing, then they're just going to stay on in their existing position with their existing benefits.
Has this been discussed with all the department heads?
Yes, it has.
And they were all, were they all in agreement?
This whole contract, this whole contract...
I think they're all in disagreement with this part, but...
Yeah. This, this last sentence is what I believe they're all in disagreement with, okay, because the rest of it is as we talked about and discussed. And then, I forwarded it as it was, with that paragraph, or with that sentence, that said that the contract automatically reviews. And I indicated I was going to forward it to the solicitor for his comments. We don't have any contracts that we don't forward to the solicitor for comments, okay, or any agreements. So, this is what was returned, and I didn't think that it was a problem, quite frankly. They're at-will now, with all the other contracts we've ever had, if they expire, they continue as is. We've never had any issue with that will.
Well, I'm assuming, Jim, that in the normal course, real life, what happens is about four months before the four-year contract expires, you're either in touch with them, or they're in touch with you, and you never, never, I hope, ever get to the issue where somebody's at-will. That is, within four months, hopefully, you and the department heads can work out some understanding, even if it's essentially the same contract all over again for another three years. I mean, that's, as a practical matter, is how I expect that this would be run.
The issue that's happened over the last couple of years has been with the model contract. It took several months to come up with a model contract, and then, during the very end of that period, the department heads applied for unionization, okay, if you recall. That went on, I believe, for over a year. So, that held up the whole process. And I'm just trying to get it going again.
And the council, our previous council, should also take a share of that blame also, for not acting when they should have. Just so we can get this through, I know you all want to say something, please be brief. Yes, chief?
The fire chief and I did not apply for unionization. The last contracts, the model contracts, they were put, they were put to us, we took them, take them or leave them situation. I was, like, twenty-five sick days were taken from, no questions asked, they were just gone. They had no value, but a person my age group, I thought it was something nice to have a benefit to go back to. That was taken away, that's the way it goes, that's the way it is. You would never do that to someone who has a voice, meaning the union people. That's why they tried to unionize. And that's not the only problem with the contract. I objected to the fact that they're going to have no salary listed ever. That's never been a past practice with me or any other contract I've ever dealt with, but that's what they, Mr. Gonzo proposed, and that's what he's forwarded to the council. I objected in a meeting with Jim, and I still object to it. I don't think it's fair to anyone, because the union people all know what they're going to get over a three-year period. We do not. You may get it, you may not, it might be a budget issue, whatever, but we have nothing to base it on. We all have future needs as well. As far as the at-will, yes, I have been at-will, there's no other problem with that. I don't like it, but this other part of the contract says, we have to give you forty-five days' notice to quit. Is that accurate?
That's true, but you can, but you can quit at any time.
Mutually agreed upon. But yet, you take it here, where you get the right person in the right seat, particularly anyone who does law enforcement, fire code enforcement, building code enforcement, we're not here to make friends. We're to enforce certain rules that have to come down. If we upset someone, and they have enough juice to get to the right people, we're out. They're going to wait us out, and they'll make it as miserable as you can, and they'll keep you on that string till the very end. That's what can't happen. That's the reality. That's why they form civil service. Just keep that in mind, please. That's all we're saying. We just want to be treated similarly, not as good as our union brothers. We manage these people. We take care of your money. Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate what the chief has said, Mr. Roderick. The only thing, and Mr. Tights, with all due respect, I am not a copying machine. I am not a contract for a copying machine. I'm a personnel for the town of Tiverton, and I take great, great pride in that, and I take offense to being referred to in the same venue as a copying machine. It's part of the reason why we don't want the at-will in there, because that is the reference that's made to us. I know that's not your intent, but that's how I take it. It upsets me. I've worked there for eight years, I've tried to do my job with pride. I'm asking that the town at least give me the consideration for my future needs, that I have an ongoing contract. Yes, when it comes up that our contracts are coming towards the end, we officially write, and every year that I've done that, I have officially written a letter to the administrator to negotiate that. In the past, that's been put off, simply because of whatever reason, whether the model contract was coming around, it's not a good time now, we've got to work at it. I, for my family, my future needs, I'm looking for some type of stability. I don't believe that I get that as an at-will employee, because as the chief said, somebody can come in, have an axe to grind about something that we've done, and just come in and grab somebody's ear and say, I want him gone. Not saying that you have to give us carte blanche to continue on forever, we understand that. As I said in the past, if I'm not doing my job, tell me so, I'll pot ways, we'll go in our own direction. But if I'm doing the job you're asking me to do, that I've signed on to do, I ask just simply for a contract to protect my family. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Ditto. And also, just wanted to bring up as far as the at-will. The way that it was explained to us, one of the other sections that was in the contract was a severance package. That had been inserted at the last model contract, basically because you could be fired without cause, so there was an opportunity to have a severance package. That had been removed because we also removed that clause, that you cannot be fired without cause. So, now, if you're going to have a contract that does end, that there's a possibility that you could be reverted back to an employee at-will, then why not have that severance package in there? So, that was only one question, and part of the, what we perceive, what I'll say, I perceive personally, is that we did sit down with Mr. Gonzo last week, on Wednesday, after Andy had reviewed the contract. We went through a couple of items that we disagreed with Andy's point, but then he was called into the meeting and explained it, and some of it made sense to us, so we were willing to concede that. And then, the last sticking point was the at-will. We sat down with Jim, we hammered that out, and there was an agreement that that was not going to be in place, and just by the fact that, you know, we took a look to see what contract was on the agenda for tonight, we would not have known that that at-will was now put back into the contract. So, we would like to kind of have that addressed in the future as well. Okay. Thank you.
Again, tonight, I came from Martha's Vineyard, and the reason I applied for this job and took this job, because when you make a big move from, like that, and you sell your home, and you start a whole other community, I purchased a house in Newport, that's a big commitment on an employee's part. I could have gone into the private sector, where I know you can be let go at any time, and maybe my choice would be to rent or do something different when you're on that, when you're on that line. I came to Tiverton and signed a three-year contract, thinking that it would continue, unless I really did something, or budget cuts, and you didn't need a director any longer, but just to walk through the door and say, you're fired, really puts me personally at a real disadvantage, especially living in Rhode Island. Now, where do I go and get a job? Again, relocating, again. So, I mean, not only for me, but part of the next director of public works, when you have to go out and find one, no one's going to come here with a job where you can be cut just like that. I mean, and when you go to work for your municipality, it's not private industry. I don't know if, have you worked in it? I've been in it my entire life. And one thing we rely on as public employees is not the pay, good benefits, and protection, and that's what we continue to ask for. We're not asking for tons of money. We're just asking for that protection moving forward, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
The other department heads have said it much better than I could. The only thing that I want to add is that, yes, we have all been without contracts for three or four years. We've been at-will. That does not mean that that is something that we like, that is acceptable to us.
It's hard to add anything to what's already been said. I will tell you that everybody, every department head feels very strongly about this town, and has a commitment to it that is outstanding. As being the person who everybody loves to hate, I can tell you that this group of people that I work with have been nothing but supportive. And I would remind you all that we, from time to time, get job evaluations. The town administrator has the opportunity then to tell us whether we're doing a good job or not, and we look forward to those. And all of us hope that we can continue to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, briefly?
Briefly. First of all, just, Chief, Chief Lord, and I just apologize if you take anything personal. I didn't mean anything personally by it. I'm just pointing out the rationale behind my advice to the town, okay? So, I just want to, want you to realize that. It's nothing personal here. The second thing I just want to say is, I hear getting lost in this. Everybody is focused on this at-will world, and thinking that's where we're going, when I see this as just the opposite. I see this as a mechanism to, to do just what they're talking about, to provide jobs security, three-year contracts for these people going forward, who've been in an at-will status. So, I don't at all, I'm not advocating the at-will, I'm just advocating the protection of the town at the end of it. Frankly, the alternative would seem to me to say that if the town doesn't notify you that you're being renewed, then it terminates automatically, i.e., you're fired at the end of it, which I certainly would not think would be a good idea. But that, to me, is the alternative that we are not having here, by saying, well, if we don't get around to it, then you continue on with the status quo, although until a contract as an at-will. So, I just want to point that out. I'm not advocating that at-will status, I'm just trying to deal with that ambiguity at the end of the contract.
And if I may say a few words, one of the things that I picked up on was that they would like to have their salaries for all three years in the contract. I can't promise that. I have no idea what the funding's going to be, I have no idea what their performance will be. You know, once you say, okay, this is going to be my salary for the next three years, then we're locked into it, okay? And I don't know anywhere where you can go and get that. Yes, union contracts do have that.
We do that for unions, correct?
Union contracts do have that, absolutely.
Right, every...
Just as a suggestion, why can't you put in like the union contracts?
I was just going to say that.
This contract stays in effect until a new one is negotiated. If we don't negotiate my contract in three years, for whatever reason, the current contract stays into effect until a new one is negotiated. So, everybody is protected. You can't just put one everybody.
Mr. Roderick, I was trying to figure out, put a consensus together with what our department heads were trying to tell us, and my understanding was, it's not quite what Mr. Tights is saying. Are you suggesting, you just can't... So everybody is protected. You can't just put it on everybody.
Mr. Roderick, I was trying to figure out, put a consensus together with what our department heads were trying to tell us. And my, my understanding was, and it's not quite what, what Mr. Tights is saying, I, I use suggest, suggesting, you just can't drop that last line, because then the common law would apply, and there'd be employees at-will under the common law. Anyway, so, so I, I thought what you were trying to suggest, and I'm just trying to clarify this for my own purposes, that at the end of the three, this contract would extend itself automatically indefinitely unless there was a cause or reason for suspension or discharge. Is that basically what we're seeing?
Basically what we had with Mr. Gonzalo was that we would have a continuation, was the word we used. We would have a continuation of the contract, and that was omitted with this at-will. That's where we explained other parts.
And would you, would you agree, chief? I'm just trying to clarify for my own purposes, that if that were true, then you'd at least have to modify chapter, section, section fifteen and determination fifteen D. You'd have to add to the end of that paragraph, and I know this is unfair, you don't have it in front of you, but I, wouldn't you then have to add, as a cause or reason for suspension and discharge, you'd have to add, or unsatisfactory performance?
I think that could go somewhere, that might be in the verbiage. But I mean, that's what evaluations are for.
Okay, so, so I do understand where you're coming from. Did I get that right? I guess the chief is.
The way it's reading in nineteen eighteen is one side of thing. We can tell you, we can give you a certified letter that says, "We wanna do a new contract." You can basically just wait us out and keep it. And I hate, I'm not saying you're gonna do this, Jim, or anyone here, they're just gonna keep you at the end of the string and you can wait, wait it out. We'll keep them waiting, well, we'll get around to you. And maybe, maybe, I'll take Mr. Tights, someone was busy and there was a hurricane, and everything passes by, and we don't have time, or some, some catastrophic, or some hot event takes place in the town, and people are tied up and they don't get back to us. So now it just goes into that limbo state. It's just, we, my contracts when I came here, there was given land, there was, there were pay raises and, and pay raises involved. Then there was a, a timeframe that I had, within a certain timeframe, I had to tell the town. Then they were obligated to tell me, well before that never, never time, that you were not gonna be reconsidered. Fair. And then you had time to look for another job.
Well, I, I, I think there's a couple of areas. As Mr. Lambert has stated, any contract in the state of Rhode Island, when it ends, you become an employee at-will. I mean, that's, that's just the law. You know, you just become an employee at-will. Whether it's stated or not, that's what happens. I, I think what you're looking for is, is more to say that, at the end of this contract, that there is a period of extension. And I don't, I don't think it should be an automatic three-year or, you know, whatever, but there should be a period, you know, a grace, quote unquote, let's call it a grace period, you know, whether it's six months or three months, or whatever, whatever that may be, so that the administration and the department heads, hopefully, in that time, will say, "Hey, you forgot to notify me about my contract, or I, I've decided I don't want to be renewed," you know, whatever the case may be.
I think that has to be mutually beneficial and fair to all people involved.
Right, right. And, and, so I, I understand your feelings on that, you know, but just so, and, and just so everybody's clear, that even, even if we took that out, employee at-will, it's still gonna happen.
Well, I think, I think you understand that.
This is not my permanent domain. I understand that.
Yeah, no, just, just so everyone knows that, that even if, if that, the wording is gone, you still become an employee at-will at the end of the contract. I think, you're, you're looking for is a, a grace period, where both sides have the opportunity to say, "Oh, I forgot to tell you," or "I've changed my mind," whatever the case may be.
That's what we had. And then if they didn't notify, after we made our notification, attempted notifications, and they continue on past that point, then we had the, the automatic rollover, if you will. That was the, some of the language, I'll paraphrase what they utilized. They said, it would, it would roll over automatically.
Right.
Now, it's still interpretation, was that for one year, or was that for three? We never got to that, that point.
Yeah, I, I think that has to be clarified. It can't be, you know, an automatic three-year renewal.
Right.
Well, yes, and the, the other, the other thing regarding the salaries, and I understand that everyone likes to know what their future may hold as far as salaries are concerned. And, and again, I don't know how, how we do that without having some sort of caveat in there saying, "Subject to."
I understand what you're talking about, possibly merit raises, or something, but right now, there's nothing, and we're at the, at the leisure of whomever's the administrator or, if they, what if they don't wanna finance it all? There's nothing to base, to go before the budget committee, there's no figures at all in there. Say, even if it was level funded for the three years, at least you had a point of interest, a point, a start, a starting point, and then say, you could get a X, one, two, or three percent raise on top of that with satisfactory evaluation.
Right.
Or goals, objectives met, objectives met.
Yeah. But again, it has to be, unfortunately, when, when you're dealing with municipal budgets, it has to be something that, unlike a union contract, you know, it cannot be locked in stone, you know?
I have a contract now. It's not, it's just about being something fair for all your department heads. I think they deserve that. That's why I got on this phone.
I think the point that they're trying to make is that, the language is there to, to be employee at-will, and I think what they're asking for is not to be treated like one. And having the language like that in the contract insinuates they're gonna be treated like one. I worked the last five years as an employee at-will. I'm not treated like one. It may not be in my, I don't have a contract, but when I was, when, under, when I did work in the school system, I didn't work, you know, under the union. It wasn't, it was understood, yet yes, you're an employee at-will, but you're not treated like one. We want you to work here, and so on and so forth, so I think.
In private industry, you're employee at-will.
That's what I am now, yes.
But it's the same thing.
How do you treat?
Maybe understood, but then we, well, we have to treat them like the employees.
How do you treat them differently?
It's perfectly, it's, it's from my question.
What parameter?
Like I, yeah, I said in the last, the last meeting, that I'm an employee at-will. I've been an employee at-will.
It doesn't allow that to happen.
Well, there's a loan.
Thanks, chief.
All, all I was saying was I.
They're at-will, you still have to apply the termination.
Good. Excuse me. Mr. Pelletier?
Could you speak in a microphone? If you're talking to the public?
All I was saying was that I am an employee at-will. I have been an employee at-will for the eight years that I've been an employee of the firm that I work for. The difference is, I'm not told in the morning when I get in, that I can be fired for any reason or no reason at all, or I am an employee at-will, and, or even at an annual basis. It, it may be strictly symbolic, but that symbol means something to the folks who are on the receiving end of this contract, that they, they be treated like a valued piece of this town. And I think to speak to this idea that we, we offer three-year contracts to, to offer some stability, so that you can reasonably pack up from Martha's Vineyard and move to Tiverton and buy a house, the same argument can be made as to why you would want that individual to stay, because if that is the incentive for someone else to come here, that's the incentive for someone else to come here every time. And, and so there ought to be some, even if it is a symbolic incentive, to maintain or to keep the, the good employees that we have, as opposed to creating disincentive to, to stay, but incentive for other people to come and, and, you know, it doesn't make much sense. If we've got someone we like, why, why create, or why eliminate an incentive for them to stay? Like I said, it, it may very well be symbolic, but I'll tell you, for, for me, if I was told on an annual basis, "By the way, don't forget, you're an employee at-will. I can fire you anytime I'd like," I think I would treat my day-to-day business at that firm slightly different than I would otherwise. And if it's morale, then it's morale. Anybody with a brain knows that you want happy employees, or you're gonna get, you know, less than, you know, perfect results, so. If it's, like I say, if it's, if it's strictly symbolic, it's a symbol worth presenting.
If I can, if I can, go ahead, I'll.
If I may, I'm sorry. Just to revisit that issue about whether or not, it says employee at-will at the end, or it's a continuation of this contract, perhaps a six-month term or a year term. We, we're just looking for a sense of security, and not only with the town, because we all, like Gareth had mentioned, we're all professionals, we're invested in this town with our professionalism, our time, our dedication, attending meetings. So we, we wanna be considered a valuable employee. And, and for the most part, at times we do, but sometimes when something like this arises, you know, it gives us a little something to pause. But as far as that employee at-will, hypothetically, we're, we're just looking for some kind of notice, that the town is not gonna renew our contract or our employment agreement. It's at least to give us some kind of courtesy, a heads-up, saying, "Look, you know, it's not working out, we're giving you forty-five days' notice, whatever." If the town fails to give that notice, we're looking for an automatic continuation. If we turn into an employee at-will, day one, someone can come into my office and say, "Dave, thanks for serving, but we're gonna let you go. I have no notice, I haven't had the opportunity to look for another position, so now my economics is in a severe crisis." So not only are we looking at, just on a professional level, but, you know, the reality is, we all have mortgages to pay, and we're just looking for some type of security.
No, and, and you know, and I understand that, and, but I, I think part of it happens to be the way something's perceived. And I don't think the intent of employee at-will means that the, the last day of the contract, three years, they're gonna go walk in and say, "You know something? We forgot to tell you to renew your contract, so pack up your stuff and get out." I, I doubt very much that's gonna happen. But I think what it does do, or what probably should be stated, is putting the onus not only on the employee, but on the town, that we have an obligation to ensure that we, we notify you in a timely manner. And I think that's probably what you're looking for, you know? And, and here it says, "Not later than a hundred and twenty days prior to the end of the employee's employment contract, the employer shall notify in writing." Well, I don't know if a hundred and twenty days is, is too far out, you know? That's something that, that we can look at. But I, I, I understand, I think, what, what you're looking for, is that, that it, the notice should be on both sides, you know? And as far as the continuation, quote unquote, of, of a contract, to me, I think it's a, a grace period, a, a, a renewal timeframe or whatnot, that, you know, within, say if it's thirty days or sixty days, whatever that timeframe may be, if neither party has contacted each other, then one will have to assume that one does not want to work here anymore. You know, 'cause if you want, if you wanna stay, I, I would hope you'd be at the administrator's door saying, "Hey, my contract's up in three months, what's going on?" Or at the end of that, he, he should say, "Oh my God, I forgot to talk to them, let me go and say, you know, are you still interested?" I mean, it, it works both ways. So I think that, yeah, I, I think the wording needs to be looked at, and I think, and I think between all of us, between Jim, you know, and, and what we've heard today, that we probably can come up with some logical thing. And again, it's, but I want everybody to be clear, to know that regardless of what the words say, at the end of any contract, you become an employee at-will, you know? But I, I understand the, the feeling, at least knowing that there is some responsibility on the town's side to ensure that they, they do their, what they're supposed to do, to let you know whether or not a contract is going to continue or not in enough time for you to, to move on with your life.
Right, and that's, and that's not in here now.
No.
And that's a problem.
I think the intent is there, but this, this idea that there's a hundred and twenty days prior to the end of, of the contract is when you're required to notify the employee whether or not the contract is, is going to be renewed, or, or a new contract is being.
Right.
But there's this, then there's this default that we have this in place, but in the event that we don't do that, something that doesn't really benefit anybody, in my opinion, happens.
Yeah, it, it doesn't put the, the onus on the administration to, to do their job.
Well, it does, but there's no, there's no outcome that's adverse for them not following through with it.
Right.
We don't do it, it's.
Too bad.
It doesn't hurt us. It hurts the employee.
But if we don't do it within the hundred and twenty days, and we fail to do it, okay, at least the employee will continue.
But we should do it.
It's not that, I understand we should do it.
We should do it.
But it doesn't mean that, once that contract runs out, well, then you're done.
No.
You're out of here.
But.
So, let me, if, I, I don't, I need to make some overall comments. I think that this is the best contract for the employees that I've seen. This was primarily generated by the employees and reviewed by all of us, and we reached an agreement. This contract has things in it that we haven't had in previous contracts, okay? Previous contracts kept getting renewed with three weeks vacation, okay? This contract now has a vacation schedule in it, where the longer they're here, the more vacation they receive. Sick leave, okay? They can accumulate sick leave up to a hundred and twenty days. That, there was no accumulation in prior contracts that I'm aware of. You could carry over maybe ten or fifteen days.
There was? There was carryover?
How many days?
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five? I will, I will verify that, but I don't recall seeing, you know, any language like that. It increases their life insurance, up to a hundred thousand dollars, twice what it is now, okay? And if, if there was one or two contracts that had accumulated sick leave, then fine, I will agree with that, but most of them didn't. And it's, I don't know why this employee at-will is such a hangup, but, you know, obviously, if you're performing, you don't have anything to worry about.
Well, how do they know that?
That's not true.
How do they know that? How do they know if they're, they're performing?
Well, why would we get rid of someone who's not, who's performing?
I think, I think there's, there's not necessarily that, that there's, we're getting rid of them. It's this, it's this purgatory that they live in after a contract has not been renewed, that they don't know if it's your intention to fire them, or if they just want them to continue on forever, and that, and it was just a clerical thing, or it was whatever, a natural disaster, or whatever it is. It's this, it's, yeah, maybe I got a hundred and twenty days' notice to go find a job, but do I really need to go look for a job? Because I don't know if this means I'm not wanted here, or if it just is, it's, it's how, it, we got busy and we didn't have time to fit it in.
I think it should be required that this gets renewed. Like, you'd have to do this. There was no way you didn't have.
Well, that's, that's what it said.
Would it be, would it be helpful at all to put a penalty on the town? That is, if you haven't contacted one of the department heads, and for whatever reason they haven't contacted you in that four-month period, really, it's a shame on the part of both of you, but however, what if you had at the end of that second to the last sentence, "If the employer does not offer the employee a new employment contract, this contract is extended for a period of blank period." Now the town, and the town administrator has every reason to comply with that one hundred and twenty days, especially if you're planning to tell the person, "We're not rehiring you."
Right.
There's, there's your penalty.
There's your penalty.
I don't know what the number is. Might be three months, it might be four months.
Yep.
But put a penalty in there. Now it's our obligation.
I can.
I just think it's important to, to basically create an environment where employees want to succeed. And some of the rewards for, for their successes could be a possible raise at the next contract, whatever. I mean, we wanna be able to create an environment where people want to work here, where people want to come here and work. And we, and if we have intelligent, highly professional, qualified people working here now, we want to keep them working here. And telling them that, oh, you know, you're this employee at-will, you know, that's how it is, sorry, you're gonna deal with it, that doesn't really give anyone assurance that they would wanna stay.
Well, I, I think this is a good contract. I really do. It's, it's better than we've seen, it's better than I have. Well, I don't have any right now, but the one that, the model contract.
You're an employee at-will.
I'm an employee at-will as well, and I've indicated that. I'm an employee at-will, okay? And the contract that I received in two thousand eight indicated that they could get rid of me for no cause. And I signed it. And I made sure, hopefully, that And the contract that I received in two thousand eight indicated that they could get rid of me for no cause, and I signed it. And I made sure, hopefully, that, you know, even though the council changes every two years, that they would recognize that I was trying to do the best job I could for the town. And I'm not going to rely on a contract to dictate my performance. I mean, I think this is, this is better than, than any of the contracts I've seen so far for department heads. And if, if the council wishes to change that to, you know, say, failure to notify, we'll extend the contract for a hundred and twenty days, I don't have a problem with that.
And then, Jim, the second benefit of that is that it's so implicit that this is a common law contract at-will, that you don't even have to bother to put in the next sentence.
Right, and there's no need to have it.
I don't know if you follow. I mean, if that's, that's an issue, I think it gets rid of that last sentence as well. Andy, what's your thought?
It's your call. I gave you my advice, but it's your policy decision. There's nothing, there's nothing unlawful about either option.
I'll, I'll tell you, you know, I read this, and I happen to have a contract, and I work for a quasi-federal state agency, and I have a contract. And my contract is for three years, it's just a renewed. But at the end, if it's not renewed, it, it ends that date. There is no, I'll stay on another day. That's the end date. If it's not renewed before that date, that's the last day I work. That's how my contract works. And so when you talk about having a warm fuzzy at the end of a contract, you have more than I have. But it's just that I understand the way this is worded, and yes, and I think it can be rewritten a little, a little better. And I, I think onus needs to be on both parties, on our side, that, that we are mandated to give proper notice, and if we don't give proper notice, that there should be a consequence. And that consequence can be a hundred and twenty days that this contract stays in effect. So that gives both parties, if you don't get together another four months, then you both deserve to be let go.
Yeah, it was.
You know? So...
I agree.
Well, it informs the decision, certainly, that, you know, if, if after the hundred and twenty-day period, you still have not come to the table, then if you guys don't look for a new job, I don't know what else you're going to need to tell you to do so. The other thing I was just, it's maybe because it's, it's on two pages and I'm flipping back and forth, but this, this salary, Andy, number four, that, am I reading this right? That in the event that no arrangement can be made for year two and three, your, your one salary is essentially your base salary for the entire contract term if you can't come to an agreement in year two and three, right?
Yes.
So it's at least guaranteeing that number as, for three years?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way I would read it.
Yeah.
That's Jim's language, but that's the way I read it. Right, you, you can't, you can't cut their salary.
Right.
But you don't have to do it.
Right. It just sounds, it just, because I'm doing this, I think it, it took me a while to get that.
I, I think one of the things that, in, in the discussions of the model contract, when you talked about merit and so forth and all these other things, again, when it comes to raises on the municipal side, non-union, again, because once those contracts are determined, I, I think that, that there has to be some, something in there that says, you know, based on performance, it can be a one, two, or three percent, subject to...
That was removed from the pri, the prior contract.
The prior, prior, prior contract.
Because if you didn't have the money to give them a raise, you had to rate them unsatisfactorily.
We don't have to be that dilettant about it. We could just say, put a, a sentence or two in that says, there's an opportunity for salary increases based upon the performance and merits, subject to...
Funds being available.
Funding approval by the financial town referendum. Right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean...
The base sal...
That's the reality of, of the exercise.
And, and the one protection that this does give is that if you went according to the old language, when it talks strictly about the funding, their salary could be cut, if that position's salary is...
Yeah, when we talked about it a year and a half ago.
That, that, that could have been cut. This way, their salary cannot be cut. It may not be increased.
The security is at least there that if you make...
But it can't, but it can't be cut.
Fifty thousand dollars, you make fifty thousand dollars for at least three years, with a potential for an increase, which I think is fair. Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I think that's reasonable. I mean, especially when you're subject to the funding constraints of a financial town referendum. We can't guarantee it, so there's no sense pretending like we can. So do we have any...
Mr. President, can we, can we ask the town administrator to go back and amend those two sections with some revised language?
Yes, and...
Which two sections? So...
Section four and section eighteen.
Eighteen.
And... What is, what is there to amend in section four?
So section four gets at what Brett was just talking to in terms of putting in language regarding the potential for merit increase, subject to performance review and final approval at the financial town referendum. And then in section eighteen...
Not necessarily approval, but maybe appropriation, maybe it might be a better...
Right, but the funds appropriated.
They don't approve of the raise.
Sure, yeah.
They need to appropriate money to do so.
And then the section in eighteen, I go back to what Mr. Lambert proposed a couple minutes ago.
That should the town not notify them that the contract continues for another hundred and twenty days.
Yep. And then that removes the sentence in question about becoming an employee at-will.
Will we have to add language, what happens after the hundred and twenty days?
State law kicks in at that point, I think, right?
Okay.
If, if they don't do it in four months...
It is, it is eight months.
It is eight months. I mean, somebody's...
Shame on everyone.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I just think... Yes, Laura?
I just wanted to point out, if you're going to be modifying section four along the lines of what Mr. Pelletier was saying, subject to funds appropriated by the financial town referendum, I don't know if you introduce a topic that we've had for the past three or, not last year, but the prior year...